Order, August tenth, 2017, if you'll join us with a salute to the flag. On the roll call, Commissioners Bocelli, Sisk, and me, Wooster, are present. Chairperson Unitis and Vice Chairperson Lattish are absent. That was apparent at the last meeting that was going to happen. The Commissioners, other than me, seem to agree that I should chair this meeting. So that's what we'll be doing. Are there any agenda changes?
No agenda changes, just to make everything clear, the second item under Study Sessions, even though it was noticed as adoption of rules, we're suggesting that these be continued to the next meeting for adoption, but we'll have the hearing today and discussion on it, but no actual action on that item today.
And which item was that again?
The second bullet under F, Study Sessions, those are the Planning Commission hearing procedures. To right, we'll have the discussion, study session on it, but we won't take any action until it's re-noticed.
Which the Commission couldn't do anyway, because it's agendized as a study session.
That's the reason why we're not going to do that.
Okay, public comment, period. The public may address the Planning Commission on land use issues not on the agenda. Five minutes per person. This is your opportunity. No takers. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-seventh, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any requested changes from the Commissioners? And I have none. So we have a motion to approve the minutes?
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, three zero. Move on to the public hearings. The first public hearing is 2013-022, extension of time for La Cobra Mina, Unit Two, tentative subdivision tract map. And I believe Ms. Flandreau is in charge of this for staff, and we'll turn it over to her for her presentation.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. Today I am presenting the application for an extension of time for tentative subdivision tract map two zero one three dash zero two two for La Cobra Mina, Unit Two. The applicant, Merrimont Homes, Inc., is requesting approval of a thirty-month extension of time for approved vesting tentative subdivision tract map two zero one three dash zero two two, to subdivide forty point six eight acres into thirty-eight lots, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June twelfth, 2014, for an initial period of thirty-six months or until June twelfth, 2017. The property, APN six one dash zero seven zero dash zero three nine, is located on the south side of Copper Cove Drive, about a half-mile west of the intersection with O'Burns Ferry Road, approximately one-half mile north of Lake Tullock. The subject property has a general plan, land use designation of community center under the Copper Cove Hooker Flat Community Plan, and the zoning is R1, single-family A little history of the subdivision. The application for tentative subdivision tract map two zero zero four dash one eight eight for La Cobra Mina was submitted to divide eighty acres into sixty-five lots. Phase one was to split, excuse me, the subdivision was split into phase one and phase two. Phase one was lots one through twenty-seven, and phase two was lots twenty-eight through sixty-five. On May fifteenth, 2006, the map for two zero zero four dash one eight eight was approved. However, at the time of recordation, only phase one had been completed. Phase two had failed to comply with the subdivision improvement agreement, and the county reverted the unimproved portion back to acreage in 2010. In 2013, a re-subdivision application was submitted for La Cobra Mina, Unit Two. This is essentially the same map that was originally phase two of La Cobra Mina. The project site for Unit Two was ref graded and all infrastructure was installed, including storm drains, sewer and water lines, and PG&E. Pursuant to CEQA, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and adopted in August of 2005 for TSTM two zero zero four dash one eight eight, and an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration was prepared in 2014 for TSTM two zero one three dash zero two two. So the adopted environmental document is still valid for the project. Extensions under Calaveras County Code Section one six dash one six oh eight oh four oh require an applicant to provide evidence demonstrating that a good faith effort has been made in pursuit of conditions of the map. The applicant, Merrimont Homes, purchased the subject property in 2014 and has spent over fifteen thousand dollars in additional design and process fees for the development of the project, including a thousand dollars for concept review, application with CCWD, three thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars for engineering and surveying, eight thousand dollars to PG&E for gas and electric service connection, and thirty-five hundred dollars for digital files. And any additional questions? I know the applicant, Mike Lemke, from Merrimont Homes is here, and he can answer any more questions that you have regarding the effort.
Commissioners, have any questions?
No.
There is one clarification I would like to make. In the staff report, it says we need to make a finding of consistency with the general plan and zoning, and although that's actually a requirement of the code anywhere for an extension of time, it's sort of out of habit, that's what we do. So that statement was in the staff report, but you probably saw there were no finding in the proposed resolution. I just want to clarify that, that it's not a requirement to make a finding. It is to approve the original tentative map, but it's not required for the extension, even though that's what we routinely do, and I forgot where that statement from the staff report came from, but just to clarify in case you had a question about that.
I do have some questions. Was the water infrastructure installed into Unit Two as well as Unit One?
It is not... Yes, infrastructure was previously designed and installed and inspected by CCWD for the improvement plans for TSTM two thousand four dash one eight eight.
And that includes Unit Two?
Yes.
Okay, then why did the applicant have to pay a thousand dollars in March of this year to the CCWD for a concept review application?
Peter, can you clarify on concept review applications?
I'm afraid I can't. I don't know what CCWD's rules and regulations are, but maybe that's something that the applicant can respond to.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners, my name is Mike Lemke with Merrimont Homes, a local home builder. Standard operating procedure by CCWD. The system is live. The system in Unit Two actually supports Copperopolis community. There is a live sewer pump station that they've been actively using for the last ten years. Sewer does run through Unit Two. The water system is live and hot. The fire hydrants are active for emergency service use.
The ordinance that controls this matter regarding an extension of time for the tentative subdivision tract map says, "The applicant shall provide evidence to demonstrate that a good faith effort has been made in pursuit of meeting conditions of the map. These actions may include, but are not limited to, pursuing approval from other agencies, engineered design plans, and actual construction." Those are just examples. And if the Planning Commission determines to grant the extension, it shall make a finding based upon evidence in the public record that a good faith effort has been demonstrated towards meeting conditions of the map. So I guess my question is, can you connect the expenditures that have been listed to conditions of the map that have not been satisfied?
I don't know that there are many conditions that have not already been satisfied.
Maybe that's the first question, which ones have not been satisfied, if any?
The answer is time. Approvals are valid for a certain amount of time, and they need to be either reheared and reapplied for extension or they sunset. So just as this, the application is for extension of time to complete the map, that's where we were with CCWD for an examples. You had to resubmit a fee to have them look at it again as if it were, they wanted to have another reevaluation of it. Time is the only thing that expired. The subdivision was ready for asphalt and ready for road base and asphalt when they had to stop due to economic conditions, and that was the only pending thing before subdivision was live and ready to start moving in families.
So, explain to me which conditions that have been imposed by county departments as of this time have not been satisfied?
The approval of the original vesting tentative map was valid for only so many years, and the final execution of a final map did not occur within that timeframe. That is, was the only item hanging out there. All other permits from regulatory agencies, local utility districts, had all been procured, and just the fact that they were not able to complete it, they ran out of time, and so the permit expired.
Mr. Wooster, perhaps I can be a little more specific in response to your question. Condition number three dash one, Public Works Conditions, this is on the original approved resolution, page four of eleven, says the applicant shall improve the roads based on the following design criteria, and this is where the paving apparently still needs to be done, working with Public Works to complete that. Also, condition one dash two, the applicant shall meet all the requirements of the Calaveras County zoning ordinance, Title Seventeen, and subdivision ordinance, Title Sixteen. Title Sixteen lays out the necessary steps to record the final map, and much of that is some of the submittal to the county surveyor to ensure that the survey meets the legal requirements for surveying of a subdivision map. I understand that you submitted electronic mapping data to the surveyor in order to make those. So I would say that the conditions that they're still working on are one dash two and three dash one.
Okay, so last question is, can you tie the expenditures that have been listed to one of those two conditions? I'm just trying to make sure that the ordinance is being satisfied here.
Maybe the engineering and surveying?
Correct. That was a fundamental component to be able to complete the final mapping. So the engineering and survey expenses tie directly to that?
Okay, good. You may make a presentation now if you wish, fifteen minutes. The time you've spent already doesn't count.
I'll make it brief. Thank you very much, Commissioner, and we concur with staff's findings and report. The original neighborhood was initiated by an out-of-town large investment group. They did a beautiful job. It's a very nice neighborhood. They were not able to complete Unit One, they were not able to complete Unit Two. Although the infrastructure was completed on Unit One, approximately thirty-five percent of the homes were left vacant, left vacant lots, weeded over, et cetera. For our last few years, we have been building out Unit One, completing the neighborhood element, improving the curb appeal and street scene, and preparing ourselves to be able to get out there and complete Unit Two. It's taken a lot of background work, due diligence, working with the utility companies, the local agencies, et cetera, to be able to pull all that together. So there are countless number of hours been invested in getting Unit Two going. Approximately almost four million dollars worth of real estate activity that we're involved with on Unit One to complete that, which would make sense for us to be able to roll into Unit Two, so we would not encumber the Unit One empty lots. And we think it's a privilege to be able to finish that locally. We didn't start it, but we're here to finish it. So we respectfully ask for your approval on the extension of time with the conditions of the map. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have public comments, five minutes per speaker. If you could state your name and sign onto the sign-in sheet, please.
My name is Ed Rich. I reside at three three eight Paseo Verde Drive in Copperopolis. That is Unit One. For the past eight years, I've been the president of the Homeowners Association. When I moved in, there was only three residents. We had to go to court, hire attorneys, and reconstitute the Homeowners Association because we wanted to protect our home values, okay? We went through a series of speculators who smiled, went through the motions and did nothing, and then the Lemke brothers came in, and they took it over. And we have an architectural committee that sat down with them and reviewed their plans. What our main concern was, is that you build at least as good a product as what we had. And I will tell you, I emailed all of our people when I got your notice two months, about two weeks ago, there was not one complaint. I have been around construction and real estate my entire life, okay? I sat on this board and followed the rules and approved things that I knew was going to be crap, okay? But it met the requirement. So the proof of the pudding is balancing the requirements with somebody that performs and builds this county good product. And I will have to tell you, we had no complaints. The Lemke brothers are the most forthright builders I've ever known. The homes they've built in filling out Unit One are better than the original ones. We have had some latent defects, you know, intersections it caved in because it didn't have proper, you know, base and stuff, and they worked with us, and we've got water mains that just leak, okay? He comes around and he helps dig them out, and we fix them, okay? So I would have to tell you that in terms of Calaveras County and as far as the homeowners in Unit One, we are thrilled that they are there. They are building a fine product. The homes that he's selling, he's selling them when they're under construction, now far exceed the prices that we paid when we bought them. So I would urge you to support their continuation in Phase Two. We're just working out a road sharing agreement where they're going to use our roads in terms of how we split the cost. He started at zero share, we started at a hundred, so we're working towards the middle. But I would just say to you, he's a credit to this county. These gentlemen built fine homes, and the people that have bought them, and I've talked to them, the new owners, are thrilled that they're in those homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. The applicant may rebut anything that Mr. Rich said, if necessary.
I think it's time to hear it out.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and does staff have any summation or response to comments? It's time for a discussion and deliberation by the Planning Commission.
I don't have any discussion, it sounds like. Sounds like the Lemke brothers have done a good job, deserving an extension.
I have to agree, Ed. I'm kind of impressed that the people who live there got up and said that they like this idea, that it's good for them, because we usually hear the opposite, so.
I do wonder whether the resolution should be modified to make it clear that most conditions have been satisfied, only two have not, and that the expenditures that have been proven in the record go toward meeting those conditions. Does that sound reasonable?
Item two is not enough. Do you want to put some more words on it, on the resolution?
May I offer a suggestion on the evidence statement of finding number two at the end of the, because that's the first sentence where it says, "Processing fees for development" add toward the satisfaction of conditions one dash two and three dash one?
I think that would make it very clear. Is that amendment acceptable to the other Commissioners?
Say that again, Mr. Moore.
Just tag on the end of the first sentence of the evidence statement under finding number two, so where it says, "I spent fifteen thousand additional engineering design and processing fees for the development towards the satisfaction of conditions one dash two and three dash one."
With the dollar sign on the fifteen thousand. Yes.
Okay, then we're ready for the staff recommendation.
Okay. Planning staff recommends the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution two zero one seven dash zero six two, approving a thirty-month extension of time for tentative subdivision tract map two zero one three dash zero two two for La Cobra Mina, Unit Two.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition. Okay, we'll move on to the second public hearing, two zero one seven oh nine three, amendments to Title Seventeen related to reconsideration. And I believe that's the Planning Director's matter?
Yes, that is. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter seventeen ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. It is the chapter that deals with appeals. We have been dealing with many, many appeals over the last several months, as you're painfully aware of, and as we've been working through the appeal process, we came to the conclusion that there was some confusion in the language of Section seventeen ninety-eight zero six zero, particularly Section B, which seems to contradict itself. It says, "There's no reconsideration of any portion of a project may be appealed after the appeal period has expired," but then it goes on to say that you can file for reconsideration by filing with the planning department. So, one, it doesn't really make sense. I think that there may have been some confusion when this was amended back in, I'm trying to remember the date when it was amended, I think it was in the mid-nineties, that if you read what the code said initially, and then the changes that were made, I think that whoever was drafting it sort of used the term reconsideration and appeal sort of interchangeably, although reconsideration has a very distinct meaning, as far as I'm concerned, and that was part of what we had coming up on a following agenda item, the discussion of the reconsideration process. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify, you know, that this deals with appeals, appeals only, there's nothing really in the title of the section that talks about reconsideration other than this one section, and it really doesn't deal with reconsideration, it deals still with appeals. So the proposed, the proposal is to delete Section seventeen ninety-eight oh six oh, and then move the provisions of A and C of the existing section into a new provision that we put up front that sort of generally applies to all appeals. We sort of expanded that a little bit, and just to try to make it clear that, you know, the appeal process is what it is, you've got fifteen days to file your appeal, if you've missed that, you've missed the boat, essentially. The reconsideration of an action taken by the Commission would be taken up in a separate process that we propose through the Rules and Procedures, which is sort of typically the way this is handled with commissions throughout the state. I think the proposed language clarifies the process, makes it clear that if you haven't exhausted your appeal process, you've got to start all the way over again with a new application to the county, rather than sort of this endless loop of being able to ask for reconsideration. It doesn't really make any sense at all and sort of leads to sort of absurdity by saying you can apply for reconsideration at any time, even after the appeal period is over. So that's the proposal. Do you have any questions?
I had one question. The draft provision says it concerns appeals of staff decisions, development review, committee decisions, and planning commission decisions, and then it says, "Any portion of a decision or the entire decision itself may be the subject of an appeal filed within the time period specified in this chapter." And the question I had is, are there some of those decisions that are not appealable otherwise, which, and were not intended to be appealable, which this draft ordinance, as written, would then make appealable?
We could certainly just insert the word "appealable" decisions. I'm going to go back to the original text of the rest of that code, give you a moment to bring it up.
The original text says the same thing, but that doesn't mean that it's necessarily
Well, that's probably a good way to clarify it, then, is to differentiate between those that are appealable and those that are not.
Okay, good. Any questions by the other Commissioners?
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this matter?
Good morning, Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. We support this revision. It's very, there are two separate procedures, the reconsideration and the appeal, and they were confused in here, probably through no intentional use there. I did have both a question and a suggestion. The intent of B on the revised provisions, the main point of B seems to be that any portion or the entire decision can be appealed, that's the point of B. Then it goes on to talk about the time periods, and that actually seems to be addressed in Point C, the time periods, and I found it confusing to have part of the discussion about filing within the time periods in B and the rest of it. filing within the time periods in B and the rest of it in C, no appeal of a decision may be filed after the applicable time period has expired. So I kind of felt that perhaps the last portion of sentence B could be just somehow, you know, either referred more clearly, it just was confusing. Within the time periods specified in this chapter, and then it didn't refer to anything in particular, so you don't know if you're supposed to look in section seventeen nine eight oh two oh, or if you're supposed to look below, or it just seemed to be maybe an unnecessary phrase because that portion was just dealing with how much of the decision can be appealed. And so perhaps sentence C could basically be dealing with, appeals must be filed within fifteen calendar days of, from the staff, from the date of the decision, and no appeal may be filed after that date, you know, so that it's all in one sentence to deal with both the timeframe and the filing period. That was the only thing I found confusing in that section. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing done. Director Maurer, do you have comments on what's been raised?
You know, there's many ways to write an ordinance. It seemed clear to me that, you know, B deals with what may be appealed, C refers to the time periods that are established in oh three oh, oh two oh, and oh four oh. They all are the same fifteen days, but they deal with different approving authorities and who you appeal to. I don't know that it's confusing, although obviously someone can confuse by it, you know. I don't know if county council had any thoughts on it, we worked together on the language of this revision, so it seemed clear to me, but then often when you're writing something you think it's clear, and then you read it again, you realize, oh, maybe it's not quite so clear. So, I don't know, if you feel that it's unclear, then we could try to work to merge the two. I don't think it really matters one way or the other.
I don't see any particular legal issue with stopping B just to say, after maybe the subject of an appeal period and leaving C to describe the time period, it doesn't seem important either way to me.
But if you're putting the specific days, fifteen days
Fifteen days.
Could be a problem, I suppose, if someday one of the other time limits were changed or something.
Right, I was just saying, we could stop it, Ms. Platt's original suggestion was maybe just stop it there. Would you discuss the individual time periods later on in the topic-specific appeals? So I wouldn't recommend restating time periods in two places, but if the commission feels it would be more clear to just not mention within the time periods twice, basically, I don't, I think that would be fine. It doesn't, I think it's also clear the way it is as well.
I kind of agree with you, and I understand Ms. Platt's comments, I just, because the time limits are in several other sections, just seems like that's not the only way to handle it. Can we go back to the other comment about appealability? What, your suggestion was to, can you state it again exactly how you wanted it ordered?
The first sentence of, or first part of B would read, "Any portion of an appealable decision or the entire decision itself may be the subject of an appeal."
Perhaps it ought to be in part A, so it's clear that the entire section only relates to appealable decisions, limiting it to the second one. I hear you, but I think perhaps just seeing in part A, this concerns appeals of staff decisions, development review, committee decisions, and planning commission decisions, which are appealable.
I think it's better where Director Maurer put it, because section A says a section concerns appeals, it's a bit redundant to say of appealable things. My only concern was whether B expanded that somehow, and I think the fix you came up with handles that. And on the issue raised by Ms. Platt, I think it's clear enough the way it is, it may be a bit redundant, but it does make it very clear, at least in two places, that you have to file the appeal within the applicable time periods. And I don't think it's wise to specify the time period here because they are in different places and they may change.
Yeah.
So with the one amendment that Director Maurer suggested, I'm comfortable with this draft ordinance. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Do you want me to read the recommendation?
Yeah.
The staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the board of supervisors take the following action, find that the proposed ordinance amending chapter seventeen ninety-eight is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section one five zero six one B three of the CEQA guidelines, and adopt an ordinance amending chapter seventeen ninety-eight of the Calaveras County Code as amended here, or as revised here.
Just one issue on the resolution, the dates are wrong and the, says this is done on November fifth, twenty fifteen, on a motion by Commissioner Mutertiz and sectioned by Commissioner Tuno neither whom are here. So we just need to fix that.
Where is that? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong page, okay. That's the problem when you copy from an old one.
And if I'm supposed to sign it, it should probably say Acting Chair, Planning Commission, because I am not the chair.
We will fix that with the final.
Okay, with those clarifications, then, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. No opposition, motion carries three zero.
May we take about a five-minute break to set up for the next item?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Next item is a study session, an informational presentation of the San Andreas State Route forty-nine commercial gateway and corridor study.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair, Peter Maurer, planning director. We're providing a presentation to you on this program that we've been working on for closer to two years now. We started off as a grant from Caltrans to look at transportation circulation needs through San Andreas. It started off as a focus on the south end of town where the passing lane and state highway goes through area that's un- or underdeveloped at this point in time, the old airport area. There is a number of parcels that are zoned commercial. Occasionally, we've had developers wanting to, you know, develop some of those parcels, and the issue of access off the state highway always came up as sort of a stumbling block. So through Calaveras Council of Governments, COG, we applied for a grant to sort of study that, look at how we might do a circulation study that would identify key access points on the highway and how we would provide circulation throughout the several hundred acres of land that's planned for future development. As we were working with Caltrans on this, they identified the need to sort of expand that, to look at the full corridor through town, and so that was done. With that, repeating a lot of things, we have Ben Ritchie from De novo here to make a presentation along with our Marty Inoue from, funny means, drew a blank there, and Amber Collins, the new director for the COG, with us here if we have any additional questions, along with Kevin from Caltrans. So we are right now in the process of circulating the mitigated negative declaration that's been posted now for about a week or two on our website. The comment period ends, I believe it's right after Labor Day, and once that is done and we can assemble any comments and package a thing up to you, we'll be bringing it back to you for a formal recommendation to the board of supervisors for adoption. There have been a number of traffic circulation studies done in various communities in the county. We do a lot of work, and then it never gets formally adopted, may be adopted by the COG but not by the county, but we want to make sure that this study does get adopted by the county so that we can use this study in applying for future grants from the state and other agencies to actually make some of these improvements that we've identified in this. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ben, and he'll run you through a presentation of what we've been working on.
Thank you very much, good morning, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Ben Ritchie, I'm a principal of De novo Planning Group, and my firm has been assisting on the public outreach component of this project and also some of the background environmental analysis preparation.
Ben, you need to speak directly into that microphone, it's not very sensitive.
So, very briefly, today we just wanted to do a quick overview of the project and its status, provide a summary of the public input. So I really want to emphasize that public outreach and communication with the community was really a cornerstone of this effort, so we started by doing a whole lot of listening. So before the plan was crafted, it was very much a listening and engagement campaign. We'll go through some of the short and the long-term corridor analysis findings, so we looked at the needs of the corridor under multiple scenarios, both the near and the far, long-term. We'll present the recommended circulation improvements, talk about next steps, and happy to answer any of your questions, receive your input, and have a discussion about this as we work our way through. So some of the primary goals of this project at the outset were to address the southern gateway in terms of both access and circulation, and when we're speaking about the southern gateway, we're basically talking about northbound State Route forty-nine around Airport Road. One of the other key priorities was planning for corridor multimodal and transit planning. Another way of saying, plan our streets for things other than automobiles flying through town. We have pedestrians, we have bikes, we're looking to enhance bus and transit service here locally, and ultimately, how to balance the competing highway and local access needs. So if anyone has ever tried to make a left off a mountain ranch heading south on the highway and you've got trucks blowing through town, it seems very much like freeway and through traffic seems to have priority and precedence. So how do we balance the local needs of the community with the fact that we have a large highway running through town? This is a map overview of the study area, so we had two sort of separate study areas that we looked at. One was the circulation study area, so it's this, trust me, it's yellow, this yellowish dotted line out here, basically runs from pool station down past south airport, south of Airport Road, and the red area was the land use study area. So as Peter mentioned, there's been some historical development applications, you've got parcels there that are designated for low-density residential, commercial, and so future growth and development within the community of San Andreas was anticipated to occur primarily within this area. And so in terms of looking at long-term needs in terms of the roadway network, we wanted to make sure we had an understanding of what the growth potential was for the community. And I want to emphasize that no aspect of this study or this plan changes any land use designations or otherwise spurs growth directly. All future development applications for, you know, residential or commercial projects would continue to be subject to the county's general plan and zoning code, so there's no land use changes as a part of this study or recommendations. Just a quick snapshot on some of the key milestones, we started out by documenting existing conditions, so this was a kind of a two-pronged approach. One was a lot of community outreach, so listening to the community about what the challenges were in terms of the highway corridor, and also doing a technical traffic analysis to understand the calculations of level of service in terms of how are the intersections functioning from a traffic standpoint, both now and into the future. We held a number of advisory committee meetings during the initial stages, as well as public workshops. We have a project website dedicated to this, we had online surveys, so we tried to take numerous approaches to gathering public input as we embarked on the study. We then moved into the process of developing alternatives, so once we had fleshed out some of the key issues and challenges, we came up with a framework of possible solutions, went back to the public with that framework, as well as the advisory committee, got extensive input, which helped us refine the draft recommendations that actually make up the report. We took the draft report again back to the public and the community, we did advisory committee meetings and public workshops when the draft report was ready, and the report was finalized last month, and we're now here presenting the draft report to the planning commissioner. So I just wanted to touch on some of the input we got from the initial community surveys. So some of the responses we heard from the local community is that the highway is seen as a significant barrier to mobility, there's a need to reduce excessive speeds along the highway, high truck and through volumes are a challenge, there's the need to connect pedestrian and bicycle facilities and improve roads and emergency response, residents desire new local rather than regional shopping opportunities, there was a desire to maintain the rural hometown characteristics of San Andreas, and we also don't want to forget about the existing community while planning for growth. And so, taking that public input, we translated that into a number of potential corridor solutions in broad categories. So one was the need for enhanced sidewalks, including pedestrian amenities and community spaces, so not just connecting the actual sidewalks from a safety standpoint, but making them more of a desirable place to be, you know, benches, treatments, different landscaping, things like that. The need for additional and enhanced crosswalks, so that's painted sidewalks, lighting, pedestrian signage, a number of safety features that really emphasize that a crosswalk is located there. Various traffic calming measures, so these can be intersection controls such as roundabouts or traffic signals, as well as gateway signage, so delineating and demarketing a sense of arrival into the community as opposed to just another stretch of highway where you're going sixty-five miles an hour, signage and traffic calming to note that you're now entering an occupied semi-urban area. The need for bicycle lanes, particularly along the highway, as well as providing additional connections through town. Future roadway networks that would support new commercial and retail development, so looking for opportunities for frontage roadways and how to provide driveway access to new businesses off the highway without having a driveway onto the highway every twenty, thirty feet, which is a safety hazard. And also opportunities for aesthetic improvements, so monument signs, enhanced landscaping, things of that nature. So those are really the categories of improvements that we were using to frame this study as we move forward. As I mentioned, we looked at two analysis scenarios as part of this study, so we wanted to make sure we addressed transportation improvements that were needed for the near term, so those are things that are needed now to address existing deficiencies, improve safety, enhance local access and mobility choices, and account for growth that's already occurred and is pending within the region. We also looked a little bit more long-term, and so that's things that will be needed in the future to accommodate new levels of growth, including residential, commercial, and industrial development that may occur within the San Andreas community in the future. So how did we identify, and I do want to emphasize that the vast majority of the improvements identified in the plan are focused on the near term, and so enhancing the corridor, and we've got some diagrams sort of highlighting those, but near-term improvements are really the emphasis of the study and plan. So how were those identified? As I mentioned, community input was a key component of this, so we did surveys online, we had community workshops that were interactive, meant to garner feedback and input, and we also worked with an advisory committee made up of local residents and stakeholders throughout the duration. As I mentioned, we also prepared an existing conditions report, so this helped us from a technical standpoint, rather than getting just anecdotal community input on what the priorities were, we also studied things. So we looked at things like collision data, things like level of service, roadway operation, so we understand from a traffic engineering standpoint what the challenges are. We had a market analysis prepared, so this was a way of forecasting the levels of growth that might be anticipated within the community over the next five, ten, and twenty-year time periods, and also building off recent planning efforts. You know, as Peter mentioned, there's been a lot of corridor studies done for various communities throughout the county, and San Andreas is no exception, so there's the rural mobility plan, U plan, and the San Andreas community plan, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't ignore or disregard those previous efforts, so we made sure we built off of those. In terms of the long-term improvements and how they were identified, we started with the assumption that the key near-term improvements had been completed, and then building off of that, we looked at what we call the build-out potential of the vacant and underutilized parcels within the land use study area. So we looked at things like recently proposed development at things like recently proposed development projects. We looked at what could be allowed under the land use map and zoning map. And it provides a plan for how new development can be safely accessed via area roadways, while improving operational and safety conditions throughout the corridor. So again, how do we facilitate or plan for that new development in the future from a roadway and infrastructure capacity, without overburdening the number of access points directly onto the highway, which poses a tremendous safety challenge? So, moving into the corridor safety issues and concerns, we categorized these broadly into four categories. So the first is traffic operations, the second is collision and safety analysis, the third is multimodal connectivity, and fourth is addressing other community concerns. So I realize this is a whole lot to take in on one PowerPoint slide with some small font, but what we've done, this information is included in the report. These are the types of poster boards we printed out at each of the community workshops. And so this is a graphic depiction of some of the key takeaways from the technical analysis that was done, the existing conditions report. So again, I understand it's difficult to read from there, but each of these boxes provide information about morning level of service and evening level of service in terms of key intersections, what the collision data tells us, and other information about accidents and safety concerns. One of the key findings were that the collision rates, particularly along this corridor, are significantly higher than the statewide averages for comparable highways with comparable traffic volumes, indicating that we have design features and transportation behaviors occurring along the corridor that are leading to a very high number of accidents relative to the roadway volume. And again, I'll go back to that example of you're trying to hang a left on the southbound 49 from Mountain Ranch. It's about 4:58 PM, and there's no gaps, and the guy behind you's getting frustrated, so you just kind of go for it, and you end up with poor driving decisions, broadsides, accidents, things like that. So what this graphic does is, again, it just goes kind of intersection by intersection through the key areas of the study, identifying what the traffic levels of service are and some of the collision data. And that's the northern segment. Now, moving into the southern segment, we have similar data. And again, this is all in the report. It was presented at the community workshops, just to really emphasize what's happening from a traffic operations standpoint at each key intersection and location throughout the study area. So some of the key findings from the analysis that I'll highlight right now. The first one is that regional through traffic and trucks have priority use of the highway. So through traffic does not have to stop through town. Time delay studies indicate about 4.1 minutes to travel through the town in both directions, which basically means that the only impediment to how quick you can go is the speed limit. And so, there's really no other traffic calming or reason for a through truck or a through vehicle to slow down and pause when coming through town in either direction. The second finding was that local access to the highway will be congested, and even more so, and will continue to have safety concerns if not corrected. So, poor levels of surface are forecasted with continued growth in the region and town. So the traffic is not particularly good now, and it's projected to continue to deteriorate. And with uncontrolled and unrestricted traffic flow around, along Highway 49, access onto and across the highway for local circulation will further degrade. And as I mentioned, the collision history indicates that the corridor collision factors are one and a half to two and a half times the statewide averages. So notably higher than what the statewide averages would be for comparable roadway volumes. The third finding was a need for a balance between facilitating regional through traffic and serving local access and circulation needs, and this needs to be identified and refined. So signals or roundabouts need to be installed at the following intersections along the highway to provide needed local access and correct poor levels of service. And these key intersections were Pool Station Road, High School Street, Court Street, Adams Street, Treat Avenue, Mountain Ranch Road, and Airport Road. And with intersection control, traffic can be slowed or calmed, and traffic safety can be greatly improved. And ultimately, selection of the type of intersection control will be subject to the Caltrans Intersection Control Evaluation, or ICE, process. And what the report is recommending is essentially having gateways at the northern and southern boundaries to the San Andreas community. So up at Pool Station Road and State Route 49, and down south at Airport Road, roundabouts are recommended. They provide a very good sense of arrival. You see it's essentially in the middle of the road. You approach it, you can have landscaping, you can have signage. You're forced to slow down. You can think of, you have a green light on the highway, you're going 55 miles an hour, the light's green, you never take your foot off the gas, you go through the intersection at 55. Whereas if you approach a roundabout, you're forced to slow down to more like 20, 25 miles an hour. You make sure you're doing the lanes correctly, and it provides that sense of arrival and a higher likelihood that your vehicles don't accelerate back up to that 55, 60 mile an hour speed, once they've gone through the slowing roundabout. The fourth finding was, to enhance overall mobility, disconnected pedestrian and bicycle facilities need to be connected along the highway and throughout town with maintained sidewalks and roadway surfaces. So the entire length of State Route 49, both sidewalks and bike facilities are either limited, disconnected, or nonexistent. Mountain Ranch Road, which serves the county government center, court facilities, Mark Twain Hospital, also have limited bicycle and pedestrian facilities that need better connections. And also, the poor condition of the existing sidewalks and roadways need to be corrected along the entire highway corridor, as well as Mountain Ranch Road and through other areas of town. The fifth key finding was, in order to foster growth in the southern gateway area, access and circulation improvements need to be planned and have funding assistance. So when looking at the southern gateway planning area, the, geographically, it's larger than the market study growth potential. But doing the market analysis, we found that there was potential for upwards of 220 new homes, 66,000 square feet of commercial, and 30,000 square feet of industrial. So again, that's based on market conditions about what's reasonably foreseeable in the future. The actual carrying capacity of the land, based on its zoning and general plan designations, is actually significantly higher. But as we all know, things don't build out to their highest maximum permitted level. So this is what the market study told us. With funding assistance for recommended circulation improvements to spur economic growth, the development potential in this area could exceed its market study potential. That's another way of saying, if the county were able to find grants to implement some of the roadway improvements, it may spur further development in the southern gateway area of San Andreas. And also, in order to facilitate emergency response, there's the need to provide additional east-west roadway connections through the southern gateway from Mountain Ranch to Pool Station. So basically, providing opportunities for emergency vehicle access that don't necessarily rely on the highway to get across to other areas of town. The sixth finding was that growth of the southern gateway area needs to be balanced with the rest of the town to maintain its hometown character and help with the existing community. So making sure that infrastructure improvements down there don't lead to the type of growth that's incompatible with what we have now. So future growth should be complementary and consistent with the character of town. And so, based on the analysis findings and the community's response to the concepts that we previously shared with you, the following circulation improvements are recommended, and these are really the cornerstone of the study. So along the Highway 49 corridor, creating a northern gateway roundabout at Pool Station, which as I mentioned, provides a sense of arrival and slows traffic coming into town. Creating a town center node at Main Street and Churchill Road, which provides an invitation to historic San Andreas in the center of town. So I have a graphic depicting what we mean by this. But it's basically enhanced pedestrian crosswalks, enhanced sidewalks on both sides, providing bulbouts for traffic calming, and providing a refuge median island in the center of the highway for pedestrians, so you don't have to do the crossing in one fell swoop. And it provides just sort of a, we call it, you know, placemaking, or providing a sense of place for this central location in the community. Also, creating a southern gateway roundabout at Airport Road, which again, provides a sense of arrival and slows traffic coming into town. And as the warrants are met, or as traffic volumes necessitate, adding signals to providing safer local access at High School Street, Court Street, Treat Avenue, which is a long-term improvement, Mountain Ranch, and Kneef Lane, which is again, a long-term improvement. Also adding bike lanes, sidewalks, bulbouts to enhance mobility along the entire length of the State Route 49 corridor. And within the southern gateway plan area, we have short and long-term circulation improvements shown off of the central highway corridor, and also along Mountain Ranch Road, implementing the county improvement plans, plus additional bikeway connections and enhancements. So again, I realize it's a, ah, this one actually shows up pretty well. So this is the length of the corridor. So this is the roundabout up at Pool Station and 49. Here's a proposed roundabout down at Airport Road to the south. And then we have a number of signalized intersections with enhanced pedestrian crossings. And in terms of the multimodal improvement, this sort of emphasizes where the pedestrian crossings are needed throughout town. So this is Main Street here, where the crossing with the center refuge and the bulbouts and sort of that town center structure to the roadway would be located. And just showing the different locations along Mountain Ranch, where pedestrian crossings, better bicycle connectivity, bike lanes on, connecting Pool Station Road to Airport Road. So just sort of graphically showing some of the multimodal improvements recommended in the report. So this is the graphic I was talking about, that Main Street promenade concept. So again, this is at Churchill Road and Main Street along the highway. So, showing the center island refuge, showing enhanced sidewalk treatments that would allow for, you know, sidewalk dining, you know, awning treatments, enhanced lighting, and clear demarcations of where the pedestrian crossings are. So just providing a little bit more of a sense of arrival to the central area of town, and enhancing pedestrian safety. So, in terms of the southern gateway circulation plan, so again, this is down at Airport Road and the highway. This is the location of the roundabout. And we're conceptually showing frontage roads and internal connections. So extension of Airport Road linking up with Mountain Ranch Road, the extension of Kneef Lane up into that area, and multiple highway frontage roads on both sides of State Route 49, that would allow for development in those areas as envisioned by the general plan and zoning code, but alleviating the need to add additional driveway access points directly off of the highway. This is a graphic depiction of, conceptually, what a roundabout at the southern gateway entrance could look like. Definitely want to emphasize, this is not a designed improvement at this stage. So this is just conceptually what they can look like, and in terms of the scale, possible signage, use of native landscaping, and just providing that gateway sense of arrival into the community. So those were the main things I wanted to touch on in terms of the corridor study itself. The project itself is subject to the requirements of CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The county is serving as the lead agency under CEQA review. And so what we did is we prepared a mitigated negative declaration, which as the commission is aware, the MND analyzes and discloses potential environmental impacts associated with implementation of the various improvements identified in the study. And because we don't have design-level improvements right now, we don't know the actual footprint of a roundabout exactly where it would be located, or exactly what the new roadway alignment would look like in terms of engineering design. We incorporated what we call performance-based mitigation measures, which basically say, when these things come to fruition, when you design them, here's how you have to go about your environmental protection approach. So the mitigated negative declaration is currently out for its 30-day public review and comment period, which is scheduled to close on September 5th, right after Labor Day. In terms of remaining steps in this process, we're happy to answer any questions and receive input from the planning commission during today's meeting. We will make any provisions or adjustments as necessary. And as Peter mentioned, following the close of the CEQA comment period, we will come back to the planning commission requesting a recommendation for adoption of both the CEQA document and the corridor study itself. Those documents will then go to the Board of Supervisors and the COG for their adoption determinations. And then, once it's finalized, it'll again be publicized and circulated following adoption. So that was the extent of my formal presentation. Happy to answer any questions, or have any discussion that you care to have at this point.
Do the other commissioners have any questions?
I have an initial question. The intersection of 12 and 49 was not included in this corridor?
Correct. Yeah, and I can't speak as to the why specifically. I came on board with the defined study area, so I had no part in the selection of the study area. So I don't know if Amber or Peter want to speak to that.
It just seems like a dangerous place that I almost hit people, or they almost hit me fairly frequently, and I just was wondering. Second question, on the signalization at Adams Street, but I don't see one on Main Street. Any particular reason why Adams was the one chosen for that? Seems to me that Main Street is the, is a pretty well overloaded intersection.
I think part of the, well, the reason why was that the improvements that we're proposing, or that are proposed in the study, for that whole section of downtown would actually sort of redirect some of the traffic over to Court Street and Adams Street. Do we have a signboard or a slide that shows the detail of what would hap, what was being proposed at that location? Part of the proposal for Churchill Road is to make it a one-way street going from, well, where the fire station is, out to the, to St. Charles Street. And so to alleviate some of the left-turn movements at that location. And instead, improvements at Adams, coming around to tie into Churchill, has more potential to handle the traffic that would be generated going in that direction.
Yeah, just for further clarification, is, Main Street is a very narrow street, and it's one-way now, eastbound. And then Churchill carries both trucks, and it's one of the main accesses that provides connection between Pool Station to Highway 49. And the width of Churchill on that approach to 49 is only about 20, 21, 22 feet wide. So to move the trucks and all the other vehicular two-way activity away from that, that portion of Churchill, we created a one-way connection continuing, you know, on the same direction as Main Street, which is more eastbound. And then are creating an intersection of Adams Street, so that truck movement can move off of that narrow section of Churchill, move it on to Adams, and then we can have a full signalized intersection at the, with Court Street, where most of the two-way circulation is largely occurring from Court Street already. We would signalize that intersection, and then take advantage of the unique character of Main Street and that intersection being on the bluff of the hill on Highway 49. That would, it would be, we would slow traffic on both ends, and then being on that bluff, it seems like an excellent opportunity to highlight your historic Main Street corridor, and provide opportunity there. It's kind of a central node for where people can say, hey, this must meet downtown San Andreas.
The other big-picture question is, has anybody ever thought about Pool Station as a bypass for truck traffic? I don't know if it even is physically possible to rejoin 49 in the, at the south end somewhere.
That has been looked at many times in the past, or at least once in the past. I know that there are proposed routes that would do that. The reality is, Caltrans is no longer funding bypasses. And so the likelihood of that ever being developed as a true bypass route is, is probably really not in the cards right now. What we are proposing, I don't know if you saw that, a connection from the Airport Road intersection over to George Reed Drive, that would provide more direct access from the highway to the industrial area there at the south end of town. So that, so that would-
I just, for a few seconds, looked at the sketches, so what are we showing? That's the last one.
Yeah, from, for clarification, with Pool Station being close to Highway 49 on the north end, you can see that they're kind of going in two separate directions. So the connection to George Reed back now completes that east-west circulation that we, that Ben talked about, that as development first off of Pool Station, now we have, particularly for emergency connectivity as well, that connection from George Reed all the way up to the roundabout at Airport, all the way up to Mount Rushmore.
I finally found it.
Thank you.
Figure 18.
There are several of them.
That's all I have.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I'm gonna have to wait till I read all this material. Is there any public comments on this matter? Is anybody here from the Department of Transportation, Caltrans? Is anybody from Caltrans here?
Yes.
Are you? Okay. And is the Department of Transportation going to allow the Calveras County to put in these roundabouts in the middle of the- in these roundabouts in the middle of the state highway that goes through town, which is a major access?
We, our, our grant for the beginning always.
So the Department of Transportation doesn't have a problem with the fact that it's gonna slow down probably the speed of the vehicles going through the town? Could you, could you take the podium and state your name and sign in?
So my name is Kevin Schur, I work for Caltrans. Carl Baker is my supervisor, who is unable to make it today, but for your question, yes, Caltrans has been an active partner in this grant. Since the beginning, they funded the grant with the COG and the county, so we do understand that these roundabouts would potentially slow traffic, but with that, we're looking at the overall community and circulation element of this plan, and how it works with the community. Roundabouts are what we actually look at now for intersection improvements prior to signals through the ICE process. So we're clearly understanding that this is a conceptual plan that has to go through more engineering designs, but at this point, it's something that the community wants, and we're gonna look at.
Okay, 'cause I was just, I'm from New Jersey, and we have circles in New Jersey. And I don't know if anybody knows what happens to a circle at rush hour, but it becomes a complete standstill and an impasse. And now I'm thinking that we have these double bangers coming down in San Andreas. How big is this roundabout gonna have to be? Are you gonna do eminent domain on the buildings on the corners, so that you can make the roundabout big enough for the double bangers to get, get through these roundabouts? I'm trying to figure out, conceptually, if you could even put one there without doing condemnation on the buildings that are on the corners. And was that part of this?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's no components of this plan that would lead to eminent domain, or the taking of any, any buildings or structures such as that? And so, the, the process of engineering and designing a roundabout is a factor of the volume, the types of vehicles, and so the engineering for these roundabouts would absolutely accommodate, it would be done to a scale. And OmniMeans is one of the foremost roundabout engineering design firms in the country, and so they've done a number of, of roundabouts for significantly higher volumes that carry large trucks comparable to what you'd see on the sideways. So from an engineering standpoint, it's just making sure that you have the, the turn radius is correct, but, yeah, there is, conceptually, there's absolutely room for these.
Because the one at, at, what's the street? Court Street. The one at Court Street and Adams and the highway, that gets big vehicles, buses coming through there all the ti, I mean, I don't know if you know, we get like 10, 12 buses stacked up in back of each other coming into that intersection twice a day usually. And so I'm just trying to imagine in my mind how the roundabout would be, and what's gonna happen when you have all these buses lined up there waiting to get onto the highway?
I, I do want to emphasize, no roundabouts are proposed at that location. There's only two, so that would be proposed as a signalized intersection. The roundabouts are only shown up at the northern.
At the beginning and end?
Pool Station and Airport.
Okay.
All the, all the stuff in between would be a traditional signalized intersection on a roundabout. 'Cause yes, when you get into the, the developed corridor here, roundabouts do have a larger footprint, so there would be geometric challenges.
And, and just to ask again, has the state agreed to share in the funding of this?
So.
Because, because I remember in the eighties in Valley Springs, when the Department of Transportation told Calaveras County to take a hike, because they said they wouldn't share in any funding of joint improvements down for the bypass, which they eventually got, I guess, in Valley Springs, they improved that intersection. But i- is the state going to participate in the funding? Because the last, when I spoke to John Galliano years ago, he had a short answer, which was no.
So if I could address that, conceptually, the way that funding would go about is primarily through applications and grants, so pursuing state and federal grants. Having this plan in place and adopted makes the COG and the county significantly more competitive when pursuing those grants. If you just apply for grants without a comprehensive plan in place, you're much less likely to, to secure them. But putting this plan in place positions the county and the COG to be much more competitive when seeking those grants out.
So this would be a gradual thing, that would happen, not at once?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments?
Sure. Amber Collins with the Calaveras Council of Governments. Just like to thank Peter and the planning staff for working with us on this project. You know, these have been longstanding issues for the San Andreas community, and I just wanted to address your question regarding the intersection of 49 and 26, 12, yeah, at the northern end of town. We do know, and have identified that as an issue, and we'll be work, you know, the county needs to work with Caltrans on that issue. But when we're working with the San Andreas community, we really identified Pool Station Road, and then that southern portion as the gateways to the community. So we really tried to focus it towards what the core corridor of the San Andreas community is, and so we just wanted to focus the study on that. And in terms of funding, it really is just, you know, if this is a priority of the county's, you'll work with the COG and Caltrans on identifying funding. You know, with, with Caltrans a part of this study, they, we've really tried to identify improvements that are shared, that will be shared benefits, both for the state highway and for the community. So I think we can identify improvements that the Caltrans will be on board with. Thank you. Oh, one more thing I meant to get up about. We have our advisory committee and stakeholders that we worked really closely with throughout this process, so I just wanted to identify, we have Donna Shantz, who is on the advisory committee, and Nicky Stevens from the Mark Twain Medical Center, and then we also worked closely with Mark Smith. So I just want to thank them for being a part of this process. I know it's a lot of work to kind of review documents and come to meetings and keep up on this.
I just have a quick question. I'm Jennifer Brock. What would be the speed limit going through town?
The likely speed limit will still remain at the 30, 35 miles an hour, but what we'd want to do is, is encourage people to slow down from the beginning. Kind of the issue and where significant accident collision history has been is at Mountain Ranch Road, largely because of vehicles coming in, not slowing down, and following the speed limit signs. With early roundabout control of, of, up at Airport, the likelihood of them trying to speed up going down that hill heading north into Mountain Ranch will, I, will significantly diminish. We think we can improve the safety there, and then we will eventually signalize that, that Mountain Ranch intersection to provide controlled access. So, so the things that Ben was talking about, people taking chances to try to get out and make those, those turns, will not, they'll, they'll be protected, theoretically protected by, by a signal and, and a controlled move.
Okay, it's a lot of signals in a short, in a short distance.
Yeah, to be clear, the, the, only the treat intersection is, is not meeting current warrants. So Caltrans, the state has a signal warrant evaluation, and the intersections that we identify at High School Court, or that Court, Main Street area, are, are all, and, and Mountain Ranch certainly, are all warranted signals, that meet signal warrants. So any place in the, in the state, at any other city or county, that if you meet those warrants, you can, you're allowed to provide that type of enhancement for intersection control. So this is not an arbitrary decision to say, hey, let's throw these things in. It's clear from the accident history and from the volumes, that those, those, those controls are needed at those locations.
So it'd be hard to actually increase speed very much between all of those signals?
Exactly, and that's what the intent is, and to, so we can improve just the overall, the, the, the likelihood of that travel being consistently at the 30 to 35 miles an hour, which is, which is what it's posted out today.
It's just 30 now. There's no, you can't.
That's right, it is 30, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking maybe we should go down a little bit to 25.
It will not go down any more than what it is, but the posted speed limit should, should be in the, in, at the 30 level, and people should be comfortable maintaining it, rather than kind of watching their speed markers and make sure that they don't exceed, they'll, they'll have proper control. And the other thing that we want to do is with more of what we call complete street, meaning that we'll have not only good circulation for, for vehicles and trucks, but we'll also have sidewalks for pedestrians and bike lanes for, for cyclists, that they'll, they'll be a much more urban feel to the road, and people will also tend to slow down with, with the narrower traveling as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
I have an additional question of.
Tell it why, but I was gonna wait for him to bring it down.
Briefly, calling in light of my Valley Springs, I want to thank you very much for a good job. You've evidently spent a lot of time working on this. We've worked with, in a way, before on the Valley Springs plan, and they are very careful with their, their studies, and I appreciate the Planning Department working with the San Andreas Mobility Plan and working that into the plan, 'cause the citizens worked many, many years on that, and they've been trying to move that forward, and it looks like you've incorporated their suggestions, and I'm, I'm very excited. That looks like an excellent plan with the roundabouts and all the pedestrian and bicycle access through town. I know it'll take some years, but this town might really be something someday.
Mark Smith from Airport Road. I guess the only thing that particularly everyone's interested in there, piece of property and how it has affected, and I know that the one road proposed to go around through the, to Mountain Ranch Road would be a public use road. The right of ways and the cost to put in that road past the roundabout would be probably our biggest concern individually as a property owner. It's a large portion of the project. I can see it's very, for health and safety, emergency vehicles, it makes a lot of sense. As a matter of fact, I proposed it in one of our other meetings, to have another, I guess, fire exit and fire trucks and emergency. I guess the proposal or the suggestion would be that that continuous road would go through all at one time, not in phases, as some could, could suggest, and it would be at the cost of the county for several reasons. Public use and the right of way that would be needed to do that portion of the road, but it is a, a nice drawing, and it does make a lot of sense to us. We just wanted to address the cost. We have a road there now, we've maintained it, and we're not in objection of dealing with the county in making this happen. There might be another suggestion of a, a left turn lane or right-hand turn lane to another portion of the property, but which would come into the designing stage. I understand that there's a 400-foot piece that Caltrans would take, 400-foot long, that Caltrans would take part of the roundabout to encroach into the Airport Road, but again, that development of Airport Road would be a continuous road, not built in phases, and it would be the cost of the county. It's a public use road.
Any other public comment? Any hearing none, Commissioner Michele?
Yeah, on the grand scheme of things, if you, if this is a proposal to do everything all at once, we know that's not gonna happen. So in the sequence, I, I would hope that the Mountain Ranch Road intersection signalization would be absolutely number one. That is such a mess, and you, you've already said that, so I just need to reemphasize that to you. There's some way to get that thing going, and not the five or 10-year delay that something like this is going to normally result in.
I have a question about, you said that, I think you said, that it takes about four and a half minutes now to get from one end of town to the other? With the roundabouts and the lights, what do you think the time?
It, it would vary. The, the whole point, and I, I did the time delay studies. I, I drove up and that, drove up and down, actually from Highway 12 to, to, oh, I can't remember, Buckstein Way, which is just beyond Airport Road, and that's, that's the four minutes and 4.1 seconds, and I, I did that 10 times, and to get a legitimate, and I said, I don't know why I'm doing this, because I'm, it's exactly the same, but, so what will happen is that you will slow, and the advantage of a roundabout, you will slow to go around the roundabout. So now we slow the traffic, now we're going to 30 miles an hour, where it varies, is when we run into those signals. There's, there's three other signals that are proposed in the short term, what, what happens there? But that, those signals are the very reason why the local people of San Andreas and the local community can get on and off that, that freeway, so, that highway. That's the, that's the purpose, so I don't know what the ultimate time will be, but it, it could add a couple, three more minutes to the, to the cross-town move, but the, the advantage is the increased local circulation that, that will be a huge advantage to the
Any other questions by anybody?
So this was just a presentation. There's no action to be taken today, just ability for the public to come in and hear again, 'cause we've had many, many community meetings, we've had meetings with community-wide stakeholders, advisory committee, as well as meetings particularly with the landowners at the south end of town. And this is just one last, well, not last opportunity, but one additional opportunity for the public to come in, to give you guys sort of a overview of what's coming before you. The documents, both the proposed draft plan and the mitigated negative declaration, are posted on the Planning Department's website, as well as a special website for the project itself. There it is, up on the, on the screen, and so, as well as all of the history and background documents, the economic analysis, the build-out analysis, the many early, no, they're not on the, on, oh, they are, okay. I thought Marty was shaking his head, no. That was a yes. So all the information is on, on that website, and we look forward to wrapping this up and getting the plan adopted, so that we can then start pursuing some of the funding that might be necessary, or that will be necessary to make improvements. We agree that Mountain Ranch is probably a very high priority, we'll be looking at that in the future. Actual funding will vary from project to project. Some might be based on, you know, combination of Caltrans or federal grant money, local match, as well as development costs, and, you know, analyzing that to look at what's the fair distribution of those costs will be something we'll be looking at in the future, particularly at the southern end. But we realize that the internal corridor improvements are, are public improvements that probably wouldn't be borne by individual property owners, but we'll have to, you know, that's something we'll be looking at in the future, but to get this basic plan down first, you know, the first step in this process to making these improvements. There was a comment question about, you know, if Caltrans was accepting of this, and, you know, Caltrans recently went through sort of a, a mission change, and they're really looking, you know, more at multimodal and how, how their transportation system fits in with the local community. And so this project is right in line with Caltrans' current mission of looking at all means of transportation throughout the state, and how it affects local communities, and not just getting vehicles from point A to point B as quickly through the community as might have been done when Highway 49 was widened through town many decades ago. So unless there are any further questions, that sort of ends the presentation, and we'll be scheduling a hearing for adoption probably in September sometime.
Okay, then that concludes that particular study session. Should we take a five-minute break before we begin the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. Second study session, which is captioned "Adoption of Revised Rules of Planning Commission Hearing Procedures," but it is a study session, so there will be nothing adopted today, as the Planning Director made clear at the beginning. So I'll turn it over to the Planning Director to begin.
So this was precipitated because of the numerous late submittals that we've been getting, particularly with all the cannabis appeals, but not just those. And to inform, we received a number of late submittals at the last minute that I have not had a chance to review. I doubt that you have had a chance to review them either, unless you happened to check your email last night and decided to spend more of the time you had on that. So there are. So there are a couple of, a number of different proposals here. We have our existing procedures that were adopted 2012, so five years ago. And it's probably good to sort of revisit these on a regular basis anyway. The procedures primarily focus on, you know, sort of the order of events during an actual hearing, who gets to speak for how long and, you know, how much time, what order, you know, who speaks first as opposed to last. There are also, you know, statements in the existing procedures about, you know, written documents and, you know, your deliberations. We've tried to sort of expand that a little bit, looking at, you know, the steps. Again, we sort of, the order of public hearing, we looked at the steps. I know there have been some comments that we received earlier that expressed concerns about the amount of time that the public has to speak and whether they have an opportunity to speak again in the process. I think this is something that you'll just want to discuss and debate and listen to what the public has to say about that. And then went into a little more detail about the written submittals. And one of the issues that we tried to address was the last-minute submittal. The, we're proposing that 72 hours be provided. That gives you enough time to review those comments. We can also post those comments on our website so the rest of the public has a chance to look at them as well. And it provides a fair opportunity for everyone to have their comments provided to you and to be considered fairly. I don't think it's fair to you, the commenter, or the general public, or an applicant or appellant to have last-minute comments come in that could have an effect on their project. It needs to be fairly deliberated. We have also provided, as I mentioned earlier today, provision for continuances. And, well, no, I'm sorry, that was for reconsideration. That's not something that we actually have any procedures established today. And so we are recommending that you adopt procedures for reconsideration. And reconsideration is essentially where a commission member says, you know, I'm not sure we made the right decision there. I'd like to bring it back. Now, that could be something where an appellant or an applicant, you know, comes to you and says, I really wish you could reconsider this. I think you made the wrong mistake. He could, you know, bring information to you to... And, but in order to do that, you know, you bring it back to the commission. The rest of the commission says, yeah, maybe we should reconsider that. And then we notice it. So that's the purpose of having the reconsideration process. Clarified some of the public comment period issues and then also sort of expanded, you know, what you do in the process for continuance. I guess I'll just leave it at that. You've had a chance to review our recommendation. I think you've had a chance to review some of the comments here. I know that both Colleen and Tom are here to present their recommendations, suggestions to you. So if you have any specific questions about our recommendations, sort of turn it back over to you.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions of Mr. Mauer?
Just briefly, have you, do you have any changes to your suggestions now rather than reading?
I don't at this time. I think what I'd like to do, because we're going to continue this and have, make sure that the Chair and the Vice Chair are here the next time we have a chance to discuss this, I'll look more closely at the suggested recommendations and whatever direction you might have as well and try to come up with modifications to these if we think is appropriate.
I thought we saw in some of the many emails of last night that there were some suggestions or agreements with. It may have been on the reconsideration list more than anything else.
I don't, I don't recall agreeing to or, you know, identifying areas we may change. Just sort of drawing a blank on that. I know that...
Maybe confusing you, believe it or not, with Mr. Muffin's emails. So I'll just back off.
And there are also, you received suggestions by Commissioner Ladish as well as in your, the documents that were distributed to you, Commissioner Muterties also had some suggestions. And I think copies of all those documents are there for the public. We would also like to see those.
I don't think Mr. Mauer is saying that he's opposed to the concept of editing as necessary.
I just haven't had a chance to review all those comments to see, oh gee, that makes a lot of sense. I think we should edit that. I, you know, just, again, last-minute comments, the very issue we're trying to address here have come in. And I, you know, I was having dental work done yesterday afternoon and went home afterwards. So I did not open up my email until eight o'clock this morning and was preparing for the hearing today. So I've not had a chance to even read them.
That seems to be the major problem.
Indeed.
In terms of correspondence, I think all of this is available to the public. But there is a letter from John Buckley from C-Circ that came in on the 7th. There is a submission by myvalleysprings.com that came in on the 8th. There are two from the Calgary Planning Coalition that came in on the 9th yesterday. One hit my computer at 6:55 PM. There is a, suggestions by Commissioner Ladish that came in on the 6th of August, which I did not read until this morning. And there are suggestions by Chairperson Muterties that came in this morning. And I think that's all that was submitted.
That's all that I am aware of.
Okay, I'm gonna reserve my questions and comments until after the public has a chance to speak. So why don't we go ahead and do that?
Good morning, Commissioners. Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the procedures. We've been involved in Planning Commission policies and procedures ever since our group formed in 2005. When we first started, there were no procedures at all in the Planning Commission. There was nothing written. So we finally got them, helped the Planning Department and the Commissioners get something going in 2008. And then eventually they were improved to the current ones that you have in 2012. And it's always been a very deliberative process and a lot of public input so that we could, you know, get fair hearing procedures that everybody would be happy with. The current procedures proposed have some good ideas and we understand some of the issues that you're trying to address. And we support, you know, addressing the problems and making them better. So I'm not trying to be combative here or anything. I'm trying to make things work for everybody. Okay. The first suggestion that we had, and I assume you have them in front of you, in the first paragraph was just to add the word "fair" to making the process uniform, fair, and efficient. And that's just because as we all know that legally, these need to be fair hearings. So I thought that should have just as much importance up there. And then maybe the Planning Director and Legal Counsel can deal with this later. But there was a change in the second paragraph. Originally it said "all hearings, including appeals", so that it applied to every hearing that was in front of the Planning Commission. And now the wording has been changed to quasi-judicial. And I'm no legal expert, but I understand that limits these planning procedures to just certain hearings. And I understand that's appeals hearings and perhaps there's some others, but I think it's mostly appeals hearings. So our concern is that we would be losing hearing procedures for all of the other hearings that you have in front of you as the body. And we would rather not do that. We would rather keep the hearing procedures the same for everybody if at all possible, so it doesn't get confusing for the public to figure out, well, what's, you know, what procedures apply to an appeals hearing and what procedures apply to other hearings? And when do comments need to get in for this hearing versus that hearing? And it just seems like it should all be dealt with in one procedures to us. And then my third comment, actually it's not in your written comments, but in the order for number two and number three, I think I just read another comment that sounded like a good idea. So we have the opening of the hearing and then presentation of staff recommendation. And the suggestion was that number three, the acknowledgement of timely filed correspondence that has come in recently should actually be before the staff recommendation so that the new timely correspondence could get into the record and the staff could address that also in the staff recommendation. So that just seemed like that would be a logical thing to do. And then when we get down to number six and after number six, there was originally a number seven, and we would like to see that reintroduced or put back in there. Number seven was called originally rebuttal by stakeholders or represented groups, 10 minutes total. And the reason for this, of course, was originally put in there for a balance of time. You have, you know, not just members of the public, but you have interested parties, real parties of interest. You have stakeholders in the community that they need to also have a balance of time. If you have an applicant or an appellant, and for example, we've had appeals come here lately for cannabis located in a subdivision, a homeowners association. So you have an appellant presenting their case and you have the public, members of the homeowners association rebutting the appellant. The appellant gets that back up there for a surrebuttal. And then we have had members of the homeowners association get back up there for their also surrebuttal to counter things that the cannabis appellant, for example, may have said about his application. So it's only fair to give both parties or all parties an opportunity for response to something that may have just been brought up about what they just said. So we would like to see that reinstated to what it, oops. Do we have time limits? I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Given that this is a study session, I think we will expand the time here. But I will say I have read what you've submitted.
Okay, so I can go a little faster?
You can, or you can even skip things if you want.
Okay, but, okay, I will take that into consideration.
Yours was timely submitted, put it that way.
Okay. That was just an important one, too. I wanted to just reiterate that we feel very strongly on that one issue. And number eight was just, we wanted to put in there members of the public also because commissioners have asked questions of members of the public who are sometimes expert witnesses themselves. Number, and B, B, the chair retains discretion. We just felt that was a little bit vague, discretion to deviate from the procedure without any explanation of why and for what purpose, so that you have our suggestions there. And then under the timeframes for written comments and submissions, you see a lot of red comments there. I guess basically instead of reading all that, I want to make the case for the public. The Planning Department sometimes posts things on the Thursday before the meeting, but often they are posted the Friday before the meeting. In fact, I just have a public notice here for the Dollar General hearing that the staff reports will be available the Friday before the hearing. So we don't get that information sometimes until that Friday afternoon. So we have, the 72 hours, if I'm interpreting 72 hours right, that's 9:00 AM Monday is when you're asking us to have our final completed comments written and submitted, researched, read. There's no time between Friday afternoon and 9:00 AM Monday morning to get this to you. Often we will get the staff reports and negative declarations, I mean, big environmental documents, just like you do, that we have to read through on Friday. If we have questions or need clarifications, we will do that. And then Monday is when we do that. We call the Planning Department, we email the planner. We get better copies of maps that are too blurry to read in the staff reports. We ask questions about things, so we clarify the issues and do further research on Monday generally. Then we can write our comments as quickly as we can and get them to you as quickly as we can. I did that this week, the soonest I could get it to you. I think I sent my comments in on Tuesday sometime, Tuesday afternoon. That's as fast as I could do that possibly, get the information Friday, research it, talk to people, find out how to respond, do a timely response and send it to Planning. So I don't see how Monday morning at 9:00 AM, the 72-hour period, would be remotely fair and possible for people to read all of the planning documents on Friday and get back to you at that time. So I would ask for you to have a different timeframe in there. I understand that the last-minute Wednesday night is not your choice. Probably Wednesday would not be your choice. Maybe you consider Tuesday, you know, sometime noon Tuesday or some such thing that we feel that we could reasonably meet that deadline. So I just ask for some consideration of what we're going through on this end also. And again, looking at the, and maybe I'm just misreading these, but they're unclear to me anyway. So my interpretation of B down there, the way it reads to me is that unless we get all of our comments on this project to a net for publication in the staff report a week prior to the meeting, that we have to bring 12 copies of everything to you? I mean, we can't get anything to you a week before publication of the meeting because we haven't had time to even see the staff report, much less write comments on it. So it's, that just seems very burdensome, unreasonable, and wasteful of a lot of paper if we've, you know, submitted something, say Tuesday, for example. Now, this seems to be saying you also need 12 copies of it in hard copy. So either I'm reading that wrong or if I'm not, please address that because it doesn't seem necessary. And again, time limits, very minor issue under public comment period. It said comments should be directed to the commission, not staff parties, applicants, or other members of the public. And we just wanted to clarify, can we still ask the Planning Director questions? I mean, we usually do, you know, that's, we have a question about an issue coming up. So we thought that should be included in there. And then the biggest other suggestion was under the reconsideration part. The wording of this draft says any commissioner who voted in the majority may direct the Planning Director for reconsideration. We would like to see this match the board procedures for reconsideration, which include any board member who was absent. And we would like to see this go the same for the Planning Commission. Any commissioner who was absent, for example, at your last meetings when you had some votes done with three members present and two members absent. Those members that were absent should have the same rights that the Board of Supervisors has for to come up to the next meeting and say, I wasn't here. I kind of would like you to maybe consider taking another look at this. And they can say yea or no, you know, that's a matter for their reconsideration also. But it seems to me it's just as important for the absent member to have that right as the present member who voted in the majority. And as the Planning Department said, they wanted the Planning Commission procedures to be similar to the current board procedures. And that would make it similar if you added that provision. Any questions?
Not for me.
Colleen, I have a question.
Yeah.
And this timing thing is difficult. And when you say "we," you're talking about groups such as myvalleysprings.com.
And individual members of the public.
But I'm not sure, would it apply to the actual appellants? To me, the appellants should be required to put their first set of papers in much earlier, perhaps even simultaneously with the staff, a week ahead of time. perhaps even simultaneously with the staff, a week ahead of time. They should know what's going on, they should know what the issues are.
Have they seen the staff report, though?
And then after they've seen the staff report, say 48 hours or some other number of hours, to put in further documentation, call it reply or rebuttal, whatever. That's just me. But when you said "we," you were including the appellants in all those comments?
I was just speaking for anybody that would want to comment on the final staff report and the initial, the things that are, the things, the documents that are posted a week before the meeting that nobody has seen, including the appellants. They haven't seen that either. They haven't seen the final staff report, they haven't seen the evidence, the photos, they haven't seen the final sequo documents. There's a lot of information that, I wasn't thinking of the appellants, but they're, they have rights to.
Sure.
You know, so, you know, I'm thinking back to the asphalt plant hearing when the appellants were the public. And sometimes, sometimes they weren't. There were lots of appellants in that one. But anyway, there were staff reports and evidence that came out a week before the hearing. Evidence from experts, reports. So a lot of people don't see that until that Friday. So it's a lot of information for everybody to process and write comments on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning. Tom and Fasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. Thank you for taking on the task of improving the quasi-judicial hearing procedures. As I noted in my letter emailed yesterday afternoon to the commission, it is important for the planning commission to develop fair hearing procedures consistent with due process. Fair hearing procedures are good for appellants, they're good for real parties and interests, they're good for the concerned members of the public, and they are good for the county. In a note I emailed late last night, I provided six pages more of detailed suggestions regarding the proposed hearing procedures. And I know that two other letters, and it's already been mentioned, have come in from Colleen Platt and John Buckley, and two other submissions from the commissioners as well. I might point out that in that, to Commissioner Bocelli, that in that, I call your attention to pages three and four of that submission because it parallels your suggestion that there be a period for the appellants to submit materials, followed by an opportunity for the county to submit materials, and then an opportunity for the appellant to sort of reply to those county submissions. And then hopefully, attractive to all of you commissioners, the suggestion is then to give you an entire week to review those documents prior to the actual hearing. The Calaveras Planning Coalition recommends that the planning commission have all of these submissions from the county, from the public and from ourselves and from the commissioners forwarded onto county council, so that county council and the planning department can create procedures that are both efficient and fair. I would also encourage the planning department to circulate the proposed procedures to the county bar association and to the attorneys who have participated in appeal hearings in Calaveras County in recent years. These folks may have some helpful suggestions as well. Finally, two last points. First, I want to mention that I don't submit comments late at night because I want to. I want you to appreciate the practical aspects of trying to participate in these processes when you've only got a week, okay? Thursday, I get the agenda from the planning commission. Friday, I contact my client. Saturday and Sunday, I worked half, part, half a Saturday and half a Sunday to, because I knew I'd have to clear my schedule for the next week if I wanted to comment on these. Monday, I met with my client and they said, "Yeah, well, you need to comment." Tuesday, all of Tuesday and part of Wednesday morning till 11:00, I was clearing my schedule of all those other things so that I could do this. From 11:00 till 7, 11:00 yesterday morning till 7:00 last night, I worked straight through lunch and dinner to get those comments to you. That's the practical reality of when you get information a week in advance and you're trying to participate. Now, this is a legislative matter, so that's fine. And you're going to have a study session today and you're going to consider it more, so that's fine. If this was a due process hearing where somebody's property rights were at stake, that would be very unfortunate. So I agree with Ms. Platt regarding the practicality. Finally, I just want to say, you commissioners probably recall taking an oath of office that talked about defending the Constitution. I don't know about you, but when I think about defending the Constitution, I tend to think about young people picking up a helmet and a rifle and going off to war. And God bless them for doing that service, and I thank them for that service. But there are other ways to defend the Constitution. The commissioners defended the Constitution during the asphalt plant hearings when they listened patiently to witnesses who had never spoken before the planning commission before and needed to get used to speaking into a microphone. The commissioners defended the Constitution when they listened carefully to a witness with a thick accent explaining technical matters relating to toxicology. The commissioners defended the Constitution when they listened compassionately as Laura Most read a letter written by her late husband who died from respiratory disease. I am confident that this commission will again defend the Constitution as it thoroughly establishes and thoughtfully establishes procedures for quasi-judicial hearings. By establishing fair hearings and fair hearing procedures, the commissioners ensure that the blessings of freedom penned into the Constitution long ago by our founding fathers are still conferred upon the good people of Calaveras County today. On behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition, let me say to you, God bless you and thank you for your service. Are there any questions regarding the materials that I've submitted?
I haven't had a chance to read your 8:53 a.m. submission, Mr. Fasino. I guess if the commissioners would allow me to ask a question, would that be okay?
Yes. I also need to apologize for you do that. Because it was, the hour is getting late, I didn't have time to include all the citations that I would have.
So I guess my question, just as somebody who also has to analyze materials for the commission, is if you or another member of the public or group submits something that contains legal citations, et cetera, and purports a position, how will I analyze this on behalf of the commission if the submission is the night before or at 8:53 a.m.?
That's my proposal, is to have everything handed in a week in advance. What we have proposed is, let me just go through the typical procedure. The typical procedure is there's a 10-day time to appeal a decision. That appeal is just like a little one-page form. It's very notice appeal, not very detailed. I would suggest then that appellants be given 21 days to put together their arguments with their evidence and their legal citations. That would be followed by the county having another 21 days to put their arguments and evidence and legal citations together. That way, both sides are getting their chance to submit their materials, you're getting materials in advance to read in advance, and people know what the issues are. That would be followed by 10 days where the appellant would then get a chance to rebut or reply to those responses. At that point, the public comments would also be due, and then the comment, come in, submissions would stop, and the planning commission would then get a week to review those final submissions prior to the hearing. That way, it's a common procedure used in other administrative processes. When there are administrative hearings at the statewide resource control board, they have those sorts of timelines set aside so that, for the very purpose that we talk about here, it's really hard to get a whole bunch of stuff in at the last minute and for you guys to try and to digest it.
You, the number of days you're talking about, it sounds to me like you're extending the process.
Yes, it would be a longer appeal, it'd be a longer appeal time than the 30 days we usually see.
I like the idea of requiring the appellant to put in papers fairly quickly. 21 days sounds sensible to me, but perhaps there's an argument that, excuse me, Peter, staff ought to do the same. For initial paperwork, I don't agree with another 21 days after that for reply. But what is our time limit? Is it 30 or 45 days to get a hearing?
The appellant has 15 days to file an appeal from an action, and I don't know why they wouldn't be able to present all of their arguments within that timeframe. We then have 45 days from the time of appeal. And sometimes it actually ends up being closer to 30 days because if the appeal deadline falls just before the next available hearing date, we have to push it to the previous one, which can be, you know, close to two weeks in advance. So sometimes it is closer to 30, maybe 32 or 33 days that we have to prepare the appeal and schedule a hearing.
Let me give you an example. If there's a decision that comes down from the planning department, like in the asphalt plant case, there was a situation where it was, this is a use, this is a use allowed by right, there's no requirement for a permit. It's sort of a naked decision, there's not a whole lot of evidence and argument and analysis backing it up. So which, you got, you got a, basically a notice, sort of an appeal in that first 15 days. Mind you, in that first 15 days, people have to figure out what's, get the notice, figure out what's going on and hire counsel. So it's not likely that in 15 days, they're going to have the item fully investigated, factually, legally and briefed, okay? So it's not until, currently, the way it works is, they may be submitting papers, but until they get the staff report the week before the planning commission hearing, they don't know what the county's position is. They don't know what the county's legal arguments are, they don't know what the county's factual support is. So what I'm suggesting is, give the appellants some time to present their arguments and evidence as they know it, give the county a chance to then rebut that argument and evidence, and then we both think, okay, now we know what we're dealing with. Both sides have, you know, given it their best shot. And that way, and then give you guys a week to review the information before it comes here for the final hearing. And you can change, you know, you make, maybe I'm, 21 days may seem too late, if you think 15 days is better, you know?
But there's the other argument I think you both are making, is the real party and interest, where do they fit in that sequence? MyValleySprings.com or your coalition or whoever?
So let me, if you go to page four, three and four of this, of my comments, my detailed comments.
I tried.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just read through it slowly and see if it sinks in, okay? The appeal notice is filed, as Peter said, I said 10 days, 15 days, within 15 days the decision. Generally does not include a detailed argument and evidence from the appellant. It should be posted on the county website and circulated to parties asking for such notices. We've encouraged the commission to give the appellants another 21 days to present their arguments and evidence in support of their appeal and to send copies to the county, any known real parties and the commission. This document should be posted on the county website with the appeal notice so that interested parties and real parties can participate. So that way, people would know, okay, there's an appeal filed and here's what it's all about. After that, the county and the real parties should get 21 days to respond to the appeal and to send those responses to the county, to the appellant and to the commission. This way, as these paperwork is coming in, you're going to get a chance to review it well in advance if you're hearing. In addition, if the commissioners are allowed to do their own investigations, that's another subject you may want to consider, and have their own investig, and have done their own investigations, they should have to disclose their evidence and arguments to the parties at this time as well. We don't want anybody surprised at the last minute by a commissioner who, well, you know, I went out to the project site and this is what I saw, and so, you know, that happening at the last minute is kind of difficult to respond to on the fly by the parties. The public written, after the appellant, after that, the appellant should get 10 days to reply to the county and the real parties' responses and to send those responses to the county, real parties and the commission. And the public written comments should be done at this time as well. So that way, the public has quite some time after the county's position's been presented to make its comments. Then the commission should get at least a week to review these papers before the hearing. That's our proposal. You may think the timelines are, if you want to change those, as long as they're fairly divided, due process will be served. But we're just trying to get a process where the, that's a little more iterative, that gives you a little more chance to digest the papers as they come in and alleviates the pressure to get in last minute comments.
I just want to briefly mention, you said due process will be served if we take your suggestions. I think, Mr. Fasino, you would agree that due process requirements are significantly less, and the issues that you're referring to are just what would be perhaps fair in a more colloquial sense.
I would say they're fair in a more colloquial sense. I don't think due process would not be served by this. What we're trying to look, we're looking for here is a safe harbor. You don't want, the worst thing you can have here is procedures that don't serve due process. That doesn't help anybody. It doesn't help the, it may be tempting, you know, gosh, these hearings take so long and it's, we hate to put developers through this burden of these hearings, so, you know, we should shorten them up, we should make, but you know, in a little final analysis, everyone depends on you providing a fair hearing. The last thing you want is a valid, good development approval being sidetracked by due process challenges afterwards.
Well, is it your belief that the current procedures do not afford due process?
I would argue, let me put it this way. I would be very concerned if I were a commissioner that good projects that get your approval would be subject to challenge on due process grounds if appeal hearings continue to be processed as they are today. That's my concern, that's.
In that same light, I have only been on the commission this year, and I wasn't around, thankfully, for the asphalt debacle. But I ask you, you obviously were and you've been around for many of these cases, so are there, is there any one situation where the appellants in particular, and real parties and interests, were really cut off, not allowed to present their evidence by the planning commission? I certainly haven't seen it.
Well, I think it's been received. The ability to go over that evidence with the commission tends to be truncated by the time limits. For example, I've had appeals in other counties where I actually got to present the evidence and go over it, you know, 15 items of evidence with the commissioners before they made their decision. So I knew that they'd seen it, they'd evaluated, they'd asked questions about it. The opposing party got to ask questions about it and rebut some of the, some of our arguments. That was a very healthy process. One of the reasons I think it's important is that if you have a thorough process, sometimes the appellant's arguments are dispensed with thoroughly and they go, okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to challenge this in court, I'm going to lose. Whereas if you have a truncated process where you have only a short amount of time to sort of summarize your comments and hope that the commissioners have reviewed the evidence and not really got a definitive feeling that you, that you missed the boat, you're more likely to have litigation that otherwise shouldn't happen. So I think it's really important for, to, having these thorough opportunities to review the evidence and the arguments is important because it helps you avoid situations that otherwise might go to court. I've had problems in other counties where, where they did just that. They're sort of a truncated process, they don't review the evidence, they just sort of summarily deny the appeals, and those cases go to court because people say, well, they've got no argument, I'm going, you know, I'm, you know, there's no reason not to. If I'm, I'm probably right, otherwise they would have rebutted us in some thorough fashion. If I'm, I'm probably right, otherwise they would have rebutted us in some thorough fashion.
Well, is it your belief that this commission does not review the evidence before it makes a decision under the current procedures?
There, the, the, the amount of evidence that come, like, the asphalt example would be a good one. The amount of evidence that came through wasn't, wasn't subject to thorough evaluation. The, also, the, the, some of the, some of the questions that were presented didn't get dispensed with. And that's, that's what the danger is. So you, you don't want to be in a situation where appellants have made six arguments and the county's dispensed with four of them and sort of left two of those hanging out there and you go, oh gee, that suggests to me that I have a pretty good argument on those two. It's important, so I'm saying, it's important to get to the bottom of things. And so the fifteen minutes sometimes doesn't allow you to get that. So my suggestion is that the, the time limits placed on these things should be more flexible so that they run to the evidence. If I'm an appellant with one issue and two pieces of evidence, I can do that in fifteen minutes, no problem. If I'm an appellant, I got fifteen pieces of evidence and seven legal issues, that's not going to happen in fifteen minutes. So hopefully, the, the time limits will expand or contract depending on the, the number of issues and the amount of evidence that needs to be reviewed.
One of the suggestions I've seen bandied about is to have a rule that says you got the fifteen minutes and ten minutes or whatever it might be. And if that's not sufficient, then that, that case is dropped to the end of the calendar.
In, in, in the planning commission context, you'd say, would go, we continue to another hearing or?
Yeah, one of the problems I see is every once in a while, you'll see somebody who hires a certain attorney or two at the very last second as a subterfuge to get an extension because it's harvest season and they don't want to be shut down. They want to be able to sell the stuff and get it out of town. Not that that's happened.
Yeah, I have been participating in the cannabis appeals, so you have more experience with, with that than I do. But yeah, the, I, I did note that there was a section in the proposal that talked about the time limits can be expanded by the commissioner, by the commission, should that be necessary? So I think that's a good.
By the chair, that, I think that's an excellent way to handle it, so. There's only so many time limits we can put in there.
Yeah.
In fact, there's another suggestion that we don't put any time limits, we simply put out half a dozen different topics and that's it. Apparently, other counties do it that way.
Any other questions of Mr. Infasino?
No, sir.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Then why don't we bring this back to the commission? My suggestion is we go through the draft and make what progress we can. Maybe I'll, I'll start and we'll see where we get here. I do believe in the, the second sentence, second paragraph, actually, of the procedures where it says the following procedures shall apply to all quasi judicial hearings. It seems to me that it need not be so limited and should not be so limited and probably should go back to the language of the existing procedures so it would be applicable to all hearings, including appeals. And we don't have the problem of trying to figure out what's quasi judicial versus what isn't. And that's the way it's been handled and it seems to me it's be better to continue doing that. What do the other commissioners think?
I agree with you.
I agree unless there's some legal arguments that I don't know about.
Okay, is somebody taking notes on this, I hope? Okay. My next one is, it seems to me that the suggestion to switch the order under one A of numbers two and three makes sense. That was a suggestion by Commissioner Lattish and also by Colleen Platt. What do the commissioners think about that?
I agree.
Switching one and three. I agree.
Okay, going on down, there's been an issue raised about the elimination of rebuttal by stakeholders or represented groups, ten minutes total. And there's been issues about, okay, who's really a stakeholder, who's a represented group? This, this draft eliminates those categories of people and therefore eliminates that issue. My view is that the, the current draft correctly does eliminate that. The, the way it works without it is that by the time public comment period comes around, there has already been the staff recommendation and there has also already been the applicant and appellant's presentation. And that's a fairly full presentation. Then the public gets a chance to make its comments, which includes, of course, the ability to rebut at that point, whatever's been said up to that time. The applicant then, or appellant, then gets one chance to respond to those public comments. Not something new, just those public comments. That seems to me to be fair. The applicant or the appellant in these matters has the burden of proof to persuade the commission that his or her position is, is correct. And typically, if you, if you're in court, the party that has the burden of proof does get the last word. In a civil case, the plaintiff always gets the last word in closing arguments, the same in a criminal case, and I don't see why it should be any different here. And that avoids the issue of somebody keeping their best points until sir rebuttal, if you will, when nobody has a chance to respond to them on the other side. So my recommendation would be to keep the draft as it is with respect to that issue. What do the other commissioners think about that?
I agree, I think that they need to have the last word.
The applicant.
The applicant needs to have the last word. They need to be able to answer everything to their best ability. They're answering all the questions, they are putting their case out there on the line. I think that they need to have the last word.
Well, I agree with that comment. The only question I have in my mind is, there are apparently situations where there are stakeholders who have at least the same interest, if not more, than the applicant itself. I'm just not sure that, that, that would mean by eliminating seven, or, I'm sorry, by not adding the new seven in red. A stakeholder then would have to be limited to the five minutes of public comments.
That would be correct, but I have a great difficulty figuring out who is a stakeholder in these cases. You take the asphalt situation, well, who do you call a stakeholder? How many miles do you have to be from the plant? Do people who can, whose only complaint is the truck traffic and they're five miles from the plant, are they a stakeholder? I mean, when you start trying to make distinctions amongst people on that basis, it seems to me it gets very difficult.
I just would also like to point out that the way our procedures work is a lot of times a stakeholder group might want to comment at the planning commission level, simply to establish standing for future hearings. And I don't believe that contributing at public comment would somehow prevent them. As long as they've contributed through submission of comments or perhaps commenting after the presentations are made, they should be able to preserve their issues in order to get the standing they might seek at the board of supervisors and court levels later on. So I think that the part of where the need to defi, I mean, in other words, stakeholder might not be something that's defined until they've actually filed a formal appeal later on, but any member of the public or any group would still be able to establish their standing at the public comment stage, you know, as I read the current procedures.
I appeared in front of a planning, this, this county's planning commission several years ago and the time limit was just not enough and I needed more time. And I, it was my first, yes, I'm an attorney, but I was nervous and I, I didn't ask for more time. And I wonder if that's the real issue here, if somebody's in front of us, be they a stakeholder or whoever, applicant, public, if they really have certain things they need to discuss, perhaps they need to be, it needs to be made clear that they could ask for more time. Chair has that option.
I think the draft provides for that in section one C.
Yes, but I'm not sure we tell people that. One of the sub-issues in here is that many of the people in the public who appear in front of us are here for the first time or they're in public for the first time in forty years or whatever, and they're nervous. And a little bit of help from, from us wouldn't be a bad thing. But I would agree to, to not add that new red seven and forget about sir rebuttal, at least in this sequence, as long as the chair has the option to expand that if needed, if it's appropriate.
I think the chair does have the option both on time limits and on deviating from the prescribed order under one B and C.
Right, yes. And I'm, I'm just saying maybe we need to remind them. I don't know how, another sign, I hate signs, but.
My next one is on one A eight, which is questions of applicant slash appellant or staff by commission members. I agree that with the suggestion by Ms. Platt that members of the public should be included in that because members of the public are asked questions and I think the commission needs to have the ability to ask questions of members of the public. I'm not sure that it's, it's efficient to have that as a separate order of event. I don't think that the commission members ought to be interrupting presentations by, by people. And that's a comment that the chairperson has made. But I do think it's efficient and makes sense, and I'm not, I don't have any particular wording on this, but it seems to me that the practice has been that when staff makes a presentation, at the conclusion of that presentation, it makes sense to be able to ask questions at that time. And I think that's also true when the applicant or appellant has made a presentation, rather than waiting till the end of everything, to be able, for the commission to be able to ask questions of that person at the conclusion of his or her presentation. And the same with respect to members of the public that comment while they're up there and when they've concluded their comments without interruption.
With, I agree with you, it needs to be without interruption. I think the interruption is causing us a lot of wasted time. So we need to wait for them to give their presentation and then let us ask questions and then continue to the, I think we're wasting a lot of time asking questions while they're in the middle of giving their presentation.
And it's impossible to properly time it because we've, we've taken their time away from them with questions.
I would agree with that, I think that's a really good, and we can, we can write that kind of statement in here somewhere, I'm not sure exactly where it goes, probably in the preamble section where, you know, that presenters, all presenters, including staff, public, and applicants, appellants, shall be, be allowed to present their presentation in its entirety. Questions by the commission will be held until after the conclusion of the presentation, something along those lines, we can add to that so it's clear.
Well, at the conclusion of the presentation by that person.
By that, exactly, yes, by that individual.
Okay.
Because technically that'll give them more, it actually gives them a little bit more than their allowable time because now they're standing up there, they're giving their presentation, they have so many minutes and then they can answer our questions.
I think we do need to have a question, a period, I'm not sure exactly where it goes, what we have is number eight, where at the conclusion of all the presentations, you may have either additional questions, something came up, you've got some competing, you know, positions on an issue and you need to get down to the bottom of that and have a question on whether that follows under deliberation. I think that the way we do this here is that once the close of public hearing, it's, that's the end of all information coming to you. Then it's just so probably, you know, where it's located, you know, before the close of public hearing is probably appropriate and probably should just stay there. That way, any responses, whether it's from staff, whether it's from the public or the appellant, is part of the information gathering process, the public hearing, then you close it and then you deliberate amongst yourself. And I guess, and maybe this question for, for Julie, if additional questions come up during the deliberation, do you need to reopen the public hearing to ask a question and get additional information and limit that to just simply respond to that question?
I would say you do. I would say that once, if you've closed the hearing and you want to solicit more information, I think the commission has discretion to reopen, reopen, but for the sake of the record, I would, I would definitely go through the motion of saying, I re, we're reopening the hearing.
But I think that the draft provides the ability to do that.
Yes.
As it sits. Okay, my next one is under two A and that's a seventy-two hour issue. Does anybody have anything further? They'd like to have changed or discussed?
No.
I, I think that so far as applicants or repellents are concerned, they, they have plenty of time to get their material in before the commission. More than seventy-two hours ahead of the time of the hearing. They name, they know the issues, they have fifteen days at least in which to get their materials and evidence together. I, I do think that maybe seventy-two hours may be not enough for, given the way the schedule works, if they don't get the materials until Friday morning, to require written submissions by nine o'clock on Monday, I guess it is, does seem to be a bit short. And the suggestion of something like noon on Tuesday has been made by Ms. Platt. And I'm curious to hear what the other commissioners and planning director and county council think about that.
I actually agree, but I was actually thinking end of the day on Tuesday instead of noon. I don't know about you guys, me personally, it doesn't matter if it's noon or at the end of the day because I'm not going to get that till I can open work anyway, so. If they have till the end of the day to re, I mean, to get that in, it still gives me time after I can home to open it, read it, or later on that day. So to me, it doesn't matter if it's noon or the end of the day.
Often the comments come in directly to us and then we forward them on to you. So they would need to be able to come in, because if they come in at the end of the day, you won't get them till the next morning. So we probably need to have some timeframe in there in order to do that. I mean, in this case, I think they were transmitted directly to you, at least I know Mr. Infasino's or I don't remember if Colleen's were just sent to staff and then we forwarded on to you. But often we will get comments that are just submitted to, you know, either the county's website, you know, and then it's forwarded on from there when we open that up. I, what I would suggest here is that whether than make changes here, I think there may be some other ways, so look at how we can improve the timeframes to provide fair opportunities for everyone. I'd like to hear what you have to say about it and I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that we need some time, maybe seventy-two hours is more than enough. We certainly need to provide enough time for the public to see the documents and I can work with staff and, and council to, you know, maybe we can look at our, our process a little differently and, and see how we can improve it for, you know, you know, all the steps along the way.
I would love it if the staff reports were available sooner. For me, it's very difficult to receive things with twenty-four hours, to study them. Tuesday's a board day. Sometimes I'm needed to assist behind the scenes with Ms. Stedfeld when she's doing the board. I mean, honestly, Tuesday's certainly better than Wednesday for me. And noon is better than five for me because it gives me some time without necessarily having to always stay so late right before the planning commission hearings. And a part of that is just the limitations of my schedule that have nothing to do with this as well. I don't know what the impact-- I don't know the extent to which planning would be able to generate staff reports and distribute them sooner than the Friday before the hearing. I think that would allow a seventy-two hour window to work better, but I don't know--
Well, that's something I would like to discuss internally before we start having a debate on that.
Well, I would say that's a good avenue to explore because if you could just get them out one day earlier, it would be helpful because of the weekend. I mean, some of us work weekends, it doesn't matter, but other people don't. Okay, so there'll be some work done on that then?
Can I? I actually like the idea that Mr. Inzagino presented of twenty-one days after the notice of hearing, the staff report when we do. And I also think the appellant should submit their stuff at the same time, the initial level. And if you had that, if you could do that, then the seventy-two hour thing would be a lot easier to deal with. Twenty-one days is probably at least a week before you do it now.
Well, I'll certainly take a look at everyone's suggestions and see if we can find a, you know, something that works for everyone, you know, to adding up all of the timeframe that Tom suggested comes with seventy-four days.
Right, and that's enough.
And that seems a little bit extensive, two and a half months to get to an appeal hearing, but I think we can, you know, we can work within, you know, it may require amendment to the code because we have a forty-five day mandatory timeframe in which to hear the hearing. So if we extend that timeframe out more, we'll need to amend the ordinance further to address that in the appeal section. But I think we can certainly look at how we can make the process more functional for everyone involved. I tend to agree with pretty much everyone that, you know, we just-- we don't have enough time to review everything. We also, in many cases, don't have enough time to prepare everything, and so there's some, you know, challenges we have to look at to see how we can meet the statutory deadlines as well as, you know, provide a fair hearing.
Well, I don't like the twenty-one days plus twenty-one days plus ten days. It drags things far too long, so far as I'm concerned. I do think that the repellents know the basis of the decision by way of example in the marijuana registration appeals. There is a detailed notice that goes out informing them of the basis for the denial, and they have fifteen days to get their act together to deal with that. And, you know, the real problem that prompted all this was the last-minute submissions, coming in the night of the hearing or the night before the hearing or the morning of the hearing. And I don't think that there's a need for a wholesale revision of, you know, appellate court-like timeframes for this planning commission. That's my view, and I would rather fix the seventy-two hour or forty-eight hour, whatever it is, issue based on the current draft than try to create a whole new series of timeframes that we've never had and up till now, nobody seemed to think we needed. That's my view.
Just to restate, I did not agree with the sequence of numbers of days. I did agree with the twenty-one day portion to require the staff and the appellant to get their initial papers in twenty-one days after the notice of appeal is filed. And once that's done, then we have this last-minute stuff. Part of it's already eliminated because the repellents have already given us their documents. But no, I was not suggesting another ten days or fifteen or whatever after that. You're still on, right? You're still doing your--
Yes. With respect to two B, that Ms. Platt raised an issue about, it looks to me like the intent there was that if people did get their written submissions to the clerk of the planning commission early enough to be included in what the commissioners get from staff in advance of the hearing, then that's-- there's no need for anything else. We already have it. And all this is saying is that if that doesn't happen, and it probably won't happen in most cases, then staff is suggesting that they bring twelve copies of the submissions to the hearing. So it's a question, who has to copy the stuff? Should the people who are submitting it, should they bring copies to the hearing so that there's enough for members of the public and the commissioners and staff, or does the planning staff have to do it? Because somebody has to do it. That's, to me, the issue. And I'd like to hear what planning director has to say, and my feeling commissioners.
Well, I think that is absolutely the point, and it's, you know, consistent with what the board does. If you bring, you know, if you're presenting stuff that's after the agenda has been posted, then that's not included in the agenda packet, then the public is required, or anyone who's bringing information is required to provide copies for both the public as well as the members of the board and staff. You know, we have provided copies today of the stuff that we got last night for you, and yes, that does have to come out of the planning department's budget for copying. It's, you know, not a huge expense, but it all adds up. You know, perhaps the, you know, if we have a seventy-two hour or forty-eight hour, you know, if it comes in before that time, then, you know, that's a timely submittal. We'll make copies, make sure you get it. We typically will transmit it to you electronically as well. And-- but if it comes in after the whatever deadline we established, then it's up to the submitter to provide sufficient copies.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it, too.
I'm okay with it. I have a question. When people do the notice of appeal, is there some sort of a warning letter that they get that tells them these various rules?
There isn't today. We could certainly do that. One thing I've been wanting to do is come up with a formal appeal, you know, form. Right now, what we do is receive a letter. It can be in any form. We've had some that's been a handwritten note on a plain piece of paper. Others have been formal briefs submitted by attorneys. But it would be good to have a form that says, you know, who the appellant is, you know, so we have that detailed information, and then we could have those kinds of informational statements on the appeal form so that at least they've been-- they had the opportunity to be aware of it. Doesn't mean to necessarily read it, but--
I like that idea.
Okay, my next one is in two C. There's a sentence, the second sentence, that reads, "Continuances shall not be granted solely to consider late filed legal arguments or new factual information that reasonably could have been submitted on time." I don't have a problem with the substance of it, but I don't think it belongs where it is because C has to do with submitting your papers on time. It doesn't have to do with continuances. So I would simply move that sentence over to part three, which is continuances, somewhere. Does that seem to make sense?
I think the reason why we had it here was because we're talking about untimely filings. It could probably go in either location. But if people were looking at the issuance of submittal documents, that was the reason why we had it at that location, so that it was clear that, you know, if you're late with submitting documents, don't expect to get a continuance just because you're late. It could go either way, but I think that more people would tend-- if they bothered to look at our procedures, they would see it there rather than the continuances, although maybe we could, you know, we could even have it in both if--
I agree. It could go either place, and with that explanation, I think I'm happy with it with where it is.
Okay.
I'm wondering if the word "shall" or says "continuances" shall not be granted. Should that be "may not be"? I mean, it could be a situation where there is a late filed US legal argument or new factual information that really is grounds for continuance.
I think that may be a good suggestion that there could be-- and again, it's going to be the determination of the commission, whether or not that--
The chair. And then we get back to that other idea that I've mentioned. Is it not getting stuff on time should be basis for pushing that item to the end of the calendar?
That was something that Commissioner Muddities had suggested in her email to us.
Well, did that-- would that have to be spelled out in the procedures, or wouldn't the chairperson have the authority to do that anyway?
It wouldn't hurt, though, to say that's a possible result.
I've got mixed feelings about that because, you know, if someone-- if it's the applicant or appellant that is submitting the late documents and you get bumped to the end of the hearing, but if it's someone else who's submitting that, then the appellant is being penalized for someone else's lack of preparation.
And that's already an option, correct?
The chair, the commission can always rearrange the agenda for a variety of reasons.
I would be--
So it doesn't necessarily need to be put per se right?
She might have a perverse result of somebody looking at it and saying, well, if that's the worst that's going to happen to me, I'll spend another two days getting my document ready.
I agree. Or stakeholder groups who don't like the appellant might deliberately do a late filed document to push it to the end of the calendar.
And then it gets to be ten o'clock at night, and you guys decide to continue it anyway.
I think we should just leave it out. It's an option anyway.
Okay, my next one is under three, continuances. Part B, it says, "A request for a continuance should be filed with the clerk of the planning commission within the time limits, et cetera." I don't-- "should" doesn't seem to be the correct word. I think it should be "shall."
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
My next one is the last sentence of C that says, "A majority vote of the entire commission is required to grant a continuance." But suppose we only have four members present, or three?
For any action, and we've been treating the continuance hearings as basically bifurcated proceeding. So basically, the law requires that any decision be made. For example, if there was an action item today, all three of you would need to vote aye in order for the action to pass. So if, you know, and we saw this week that the issue of a continuance came up as a bifurcated appeal proceeding at the Board of Supervisors. So I think there would still need to be a quorum to make a decision in order to satisfy the meeting rules of the state.
Well, not just a quorum, but a majority vote of the full commission. So three members, you know, it takes three votes to act on anything, whether there's three, four, or five members present. Three votes is required for an action.
So that's true with respect to any commission action?
Yes.
So why do we need to say it here?
Well, I think to notify the appellant that if they're seeking a continuance, they need to be aware that they're going to have to have three people voting in favor regardless of how many people happen to be present that day. I, you know, in general, I, yeah, in general, I think that notice to the public is the reason that things to be spelled out as opposed to just dealt with on a discretionary basis by the chair.
Okay. And I just had a question about E, which seems to require a continuance. If the applicant or appellant requests it prior to the commencement of the hearing, if there's only three commissioners present, what's the thinking on that?
So this gets to the point where, right, if there were an appeal or an action item here today, well, for example, the extension of time, one commissioner could have prevented that from occurring by voting no. And so it provides, I guess, a fairness to an applicant or an appellant if there's only going to be three members present, and knowing they have to get a unanimous decision of those members present, that they would-- they have the option to request a continuance to a date when there'd be at least four members present.
That seems to make sense.
Yeah, sort of a courtesy more than anything.
Okay, my last one, I think, is under the section five, reconsideration, A1. "Any commissioner who voted in a majority may direct the planning commission-- director to place on an upcoming planning commission agenda a request the commission vote to reconsider, et cetera." The suggestion has been made by Colleen Platt that any commissioner who was absent should be able to make that request, and that seems to make sense to me. It does seem to conform the commission procedures to the Board of Supervisors' procedures.
So it just say, "Any commissioner may direct?"
Well, B is, "Any commissioner who voted in a majority as well as any commissioner who was absent may direct," I think was the language. It was the language. Would that be acceptable?
Okay, by me.
I agree.
That's all I had.
The other Colleen Platt item was the one right after that, number two, A2. I use my color printer so I can spot it right away. She has a question, really. There should also be provision for noticing the parties that their matter will be discussed before reconsideration.
Well, if it's agendized, there's notice that goes out.
So the first step in the process would just be for the commission to discuss whether or not you want to bring this back for reconsideration. There would be no public input into it. It'd just say, gee, I think maybe we made a mistake here, or I didn't get to participate, so I would like to have this reconsidered, and then you would vote. Then notice goes out to the parties that they're actually going to be reconsidering it.
So it already goes out?
So it goes out at the second step of the process.
Right, but the first step, nobody knows if it's going to be reconsidered.
Right. And that's just a discussion between the commissioners. So I'm not sure it's necessary.
Okay. Let's go back to item three A, or three B, I'm sorry, under continuances.
The first discussion.
"Request for continuance shall be filed with the clerk." We've kind of discussed that. Does that foreclose a verbal request for continuance? Can you ask for a continuance orally at the beginning of the hearing?
We often get oral requests for--
Right. That's my point. Too subtle. So it's good to have a written one. So it's good to have a written one, but I don't think it's mandatory that it be in writing.
I would agree with you.
And then I wanted to see what the time limit is described above. I don't know what that means. Are we talking 72 hours? What time limits are we...
Well, it says for written submissions.
Okay. All right.
Well, why don't we... Why don't we say, "Any written request for a continuance shall be filed, et cetera."
Okay.
And that leaves the way open for... If something pops up at the last minute, you know...
That'd be good.
So a written request for a continuance shall be filed with the clerk of the planning commission within the time limits described above for written submissions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good point.
You know, I'd like to go back to the question you had about reconsideration and the notice. I was maybe I was getting step one and step two confused a little bit. I think I'd like to revisit that issue a little bit. That maybe that, one, maybe we don't need three steps in the process. Maybe we can do it in two steps. And if we do have three steps, then probably notice to the parties is appropriate. So let me work with counsel on that a little bit to maybe we can streamline that process somewhat and make sure that notice is provided as needed.
Do any of the other commissioners have any further comments?
Did we consider all of Commissioner Vias' files? He did submit it in writing, and I think it was... Copies are available for pollings.
I did read them, and the ones I thought warranted a change, I brought up.
Well, we'll be back anyway. Oh, I had one other comment on the sequence, the order of public hearing. Seems that item 11, the entertainment of motion, perhaps we should say something about staff stating its recommendations, recommending the proposal. It's part of it. That's when we do the motion, after staff has actually read what it is that they want us to...
So it'd go between 10 and 11?
Right. Either at the end of 10 or start at 11, but completely separate.
I think that would be fine.
Maybe just call it staff recommendation, comma, entertainment of motion, and second as the number one. It's one way to do it.
So we will be bringing these back to you, taking into consideration the direction we received today from the members present, as well as looking at more thoroughly the written comments we received. I don't think we will be... We can't bring those back on the 24th because we've already... Well, I guess we could notice it that way, but I think we have a very full agenda that day anyway. So most likely, I think, bring these back on the, I believe it's the 14th, would be the first regularly scheduled meeting of September.
I will be here that day, but I don't know if that matters. Hopefully, we'll have vetted most of the considerations and requests by then.
Okay. I guess we're... We finished the study session. Do we have any commissioner reports?
No, sir.
Nope. Any planning director reports?
Just one thing I'd like to bring to your attention. The board on Tuesday referred a request to have an appeal sent back to you, remanded back to you. This was one where the continuance was requested in writing. No one was present representing the appellant. You chose not to continue and held the hearing, denied the appeal. It was appealed to the board, and the board decided to send it back to you to consider their input into the appeal process. So that will be coming back as soon as we can schedule it, probably in September.
As a clarifier, they didn't send it back to consider the continuance. They basically remanded it back, saying they wanted the matter heard on the merits.
Right.
So that's... There was no direction with respect to the actual substance of the hearing. They didn't reach the merits of the hearing.
And that would come back in September?
Yes, because we'll need to re-notice it.
Are we going to have an extra meeting this month?
Um... I'm still working my way through the responses to comments. It's taking a little longer than I anticipated. So it's unlikely by the time we get revisions to the responses to comments back that they have enough time for you to read the documents to schedule something that last week of August. So that's cleared off your calendar now. You can... I'm not sure about... I know that we will probably having many more appeals. We have, I think, seven scheduled for the 24th. Bring your sleeping bag. You're going to be gone most of that first week of September.
Twenty-six through the seventh.
So...
Most of that time.
Yeah. If we schedule a special hearing, it's probably going to have to be later on in September.
Well, if you wanted to schedule it during that time, then I'd have to come back from Texas.
Please.
Put it that way. We're going to have a special hearing on the 7th.
But I'd have to come back from Yellowstone.
So just trying to work through everyone's schedules. I don't even get a honeymoon during that time period, so... I'll let you know. Again, it's going to depend on when we complete the response to comments and get the final, final version out of the final EIR. Most likely not. Unless we schedule hearings maybe earlier in the week, or we schedule a Wednesday, Thursday, or a Thursday, Friday meeting to double up during that. So that might be a better way to do it. You will be gone on that week, so you just can't win.
I think the suggestion was made earlier that that the hearing on the cannabis regulation or ban or whatever in the EIR, continue from day to day.
Right.
Rather than...
Week to week.
Kick it for a week or two.
That works with me. I just need to know ahead of time because I have to tell my boss.
Right. And I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to work and, you know, give you enough time to review the everything and figure out how it works with everyone else's schedule as well. So just trying to figure that out. And I just don't know when the final document will be out for, you know, for your ability to review it.
We could email it about 6:30 in the night.
72 hours.
There's been a suggestion that when the planning commission considers the proposed marijuana ordinance and the EIR, that it also consider at the same time revising the dispensary provisions, which are in a separate ordinance but related. Will the agenda be broad enough to include that?
We can make sure that it is.
Because it's been suggested that the commission should come up with a recommendation as to the complete package at one time because they are related.
And this would be at the same time as the EIR for the ban ordinance?
Correct.
Yes.
So if we do it like that, then you're right, we need to do it continuance instead of...
So we'll... As soon as I know the dates that we're likely to have, and then I'd like to give you at least two weeks, if not three weeks, to be able to, you know, read the response to comments, the final EIR. The final findings will probably not be available because until we know the final direction, the board, I mean, we will have some draft findings, but that could change during the hearing process. It could change based on your recommendation. Typically, the findings are made after an initial direction to staff, as this is what we intend to do. I think we've done this before on other more controversial issues, is let's indicate the direction, come back with the findings. Typically, the findings, statements on an EIR can run to dozens, if not over 100 pages. And it does take time to prepare that, to make sure that we have been thorough in preparing that. And so while we have the direction that the board has given us as far as preparing the ban, there may be issues that come out of the hearing and the EIR to address findings of already consideration, findings of fact, and the actual findings for the adoption of an ordinance itself. So there would be... We'll still have to sort of work through that process of ensuring there's sufficient time to prepare that, understanding, you know, the final action of the board. And so we'll have to work closely with county councils, well, or outside council, on how we address the findings, you know, on your recommendation. So there's still some work to be done on that.
Mr. Chair, could I comment on that a second?
Yes.
First of all, I think it's a great idea to consider the distribution centers as well as the ban and the regulation together. When producing a final EIR, the county not only responds to public comments, but it also sometimes modifies parts of the final EIR. And I just want to let Peter think about, if you are going to act on the dispensaries, you may want to evaluate the potential impacts of that in that final EIR so that you can act at that time rather than have to do some sort of supplement thereafter. Because, as you know, if there are no dispensaries here, people will be driving to dispensaries elsewhere. And, you know, somebody may raise that issue at that time. And I know that you're trying to move this forward expeditiously, and it would probably behoove you not to have to supplement the EIR after your planning commission hearing.
Anything else?
I don't think so. The plates are full.
Then we are adjourned.